Pressing and holding.
Okay, there we go, sorry. Hi, good evening, council. My name is Christina Feebig. I'm with the Tri-County Hazardous Waste and Recycling Program and I am the Solid Waste Coordinator. I have a presentation to share with you all today. Thank you for having me here tonight. Next slide, please. Like to give a brief overview about our Tri-County program as well as provide information to citizens who may not be aware of our services. Next slide, please. The Tri-County Hazardous Waste and Recycling Program is a three-county, nine-jurisdiction program and has been serving the region for over two decades. The core of our program is to provide hazardous waste collection events to small businesses, agricultural producers, and households several times a year. The goal is to remove hazardous waste like pesticide, chemicals, and other dangerous materials from our three waste sheds. We're also tasked with providing recycling education in partnership with the services Waste Connection provides. There are many additional things we do to support proper disposal such as subsidizing the disposal freon appliances, sharps, and providing reusable material for events. We also allow for e-waste disposal at our rural events. Next slide, please. Last year, we collected a little over one hundred and seventy thousand pounds of material, hazardous material. This year so far, as of, as of the twenty-eighth of last month, we have a little over a hundred and fifty thousand pounds of material. Next slide, please. Our events are held at a variety of community locations, including the Dallas Transfer Station and the Hood River Transfer Station. We do ask that registration is required for all who attend the transfer station events to reduce traffic as well as for safety concerns. While businesses and agricultural producers are required to submit an application one week before the event, and that goes for all events. Next slide, thank you. This year, we partnered with a local Girl Scout troop to host a recycled art event. A total of sixteen girls participated, with six adults, including myself. The event was successful in teaching the girls how to upcycle in fun and creative ways. Our program also supports Waste Connections and whatever events they may have, such as the free mattress recycling event they had in September. In the future, we will continue to support Waste Connections as well as provide education to younger generations. Next slide, needs. Our very next event will be February the thirteenth in 2026, that is a Friday. And at the Hood River Garbage, and registration is open for all at the moment. We have refreshed our twice-yearly newsletters that go out to all addresses and share our collection schedule as well as helpful hints about recycling and hazardous waste disposal. The information is provided in both English and Spanish, and you can expect our next newsletter coming shortly. Next slide. Now, an update about recycling, one that you probably have all been waiting for. Today, the curbside recycling pickup and drop-offs at the transfer station accept the Universal Statewide Collection List, the also known as the USCL. Recycle On, the logo you see on the screen, is a statewide, public-facing educational organization helping all Oregonians feel confident in recycling. So if you see that logo, now you know. You might be asking, what is different about the new list? Next slide, please. Well, for starters, this list is all across Oregon, so Oregon has one recycling list, and that is it. The recyclable items that were added for our county are plastic tubs without lids, made of PET number one, HDP number two, or PP number five. Buckets, pails, and storage containers made of HDP number two and/or PP number five. Aseptic gable-style cartons, these are milk, alternative milk, broth, and juice. Nursery packaging and trays made of HDP number two and PP number five. As well as scrap metal weighing under ten pounds or less, or eighteen inches or less. In length, and please remember, no sharps or tanglers are allowed. You can remember the term, if lid screws on, leave it on. This is different from how it was before. So please make sure that items are rinsed, dried, and cleaned before recycling. Everything else is on the list except aerosol cans and tinfoil, which are no longer accepted. Clamshells containers, which are like the Berry containers, as well as other food-type style containers, and shredded paper are still some of our greatest sources of contamination. Next slide, please. You might be wondering what your role is in our organization. Your role is to appoint or represent our steering committee, which is Mike Matthews, so big thanks to all of his work on our committee. We meet quarterly and approve budgets, work plans, and partners with our staff to promote our services of the program as well as help with our DEQ waste shed reporting. Next slide, please. If you have any questions, stay in touch. We're on Facebook and Instagram. I make videos weekly, so you can stay tuned for all the fun. Feel free to email us, find our website, or call us. Our email is changing on the twenty-ninth, so that is something to be aware of. Any questions?
I don't think we have any questions on that.
Yeah, I can do. So, two questions. First of all, how is this list compared to Washington State's list?
I do not know Washington State's list.
And it seems like there's a fair number of changes. I was kind of surprised when you realized that there were so many different things that had changed from what we were doing. And I had trouble following it, so I'm going to guess that it's going to be kind of confusing. So what's the process going to be for helping people sort of regularize stuff in the container?
So our next newsletter is going to have a whole list, a really detailed list of what can and cannot be recycled. So that should help a lot of households. The list you saw on the screen earlier, that list is posted at the transfer station, it's on our website. It is confusing. I'm trying to do as much social media outreach as I can about those items. But for households and for citizens, it's trying to stay in touch with what we do and the education that we supply.
Any more questions? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And the next thing on our agenda is the planner for the task force for our
And if I might give an introduction, so we are pleased to have DLR, represented by Mitch, here with us this evening. He has been working through this process with us and a steering committee of Commissioner Babbitts and then a cross-section of our department leadership on evaluating our facilities and looking at the, what all would be required in the replacement of our essential facilities. And so this is a great opportunity to review this final report. It will provide us with a couple of options. The primary goal for this evening is to receive the report, and then I will have recommendations in regards to the ask of the Association of Oregon County's task force that will be putting together the next budget request for the OJD, Chief Justice's budget. This is a really important piece of work for us in regards to our facilities. It's something that, as our county staff is looking forward, facilities are something that will need special attention, obviously, as we see this report moving forward. And so it will be an important outcome of the fiscal work that we'll be doing over this winter as well, to understand how all of these pieces fit together. So with that, I'll hand it over for our report this evening. Thanks.
Thanks, Allison. My name is Mitchina with DLR Group. I was, I'm an architect. I'm part of the team that's worked on this project. There's many other, some of them are online here to help answer questions should they come up. The report that I'm going to page through is the final report that we furnished to you, so I'm going through it as a way to explain what is in it. This has been a year-long process, so as we kind of go through here, where we're going is what the cost is for the first phase of a replacement for some of county facilities and county courthouse. So, take you through how do we get to that point, what's contained in this report, and kind of take you through our thought process that we've been going through over, over that interactive collaborative process over the last year. So, as we know, the Oregon Judicial Department offers a funding source for the replacement of county courthouses in Oregon. Fifty percent match for state functions of that courthouse. So as we look at all of this, it's also about trying to figure out what, what the funding, what that funding piece is going to be for the courthouse, and how much of that is then left for the county. Our executive summary here, obviously you can't read this, this is painting a picture of how we got here. In 2008, OJD did a county courthouse assessment of all the courthouses in Oregon. Hood River is forty-six out of forty-eight, forty-six out of forty-eight courthouses, as in the most need of replacement. That assessment establishes not just security, seismic, safety, but also operations. So are the facilities within that courthouse suitable and sufficient for the judicial department? And so that, from all of that, they look at it a whole bunch of different ways and give a priority list that's been established since about 2009. The first step, the first major step that the county undertook was in 2015 with a planning study that first established how much space you guys are going to need, where it might go. They looked at a phased replacement of the courthouse on its current site, building something next to it, removing the structure, building something next to it, and also some other sites around Hood River. There was some funding challenges after that that was put aside, and so ten years later, we're back to, one, update that report and to do another survey of areas around Hood River to figure out where this thing could go. So big picture, how big is it, where's it going to go, and how much does it cost? That'll give you the number to start moving forward with how to plan for the replacement of these county facilities and county courthouse. I'm going to come back to this slide on the, on the left here. These are some of the costs, and I'll zoom into that at the end for a Phase One. First step forward to do that. On the right timeline of the work that we've been going over the last year, big picture, it is first looking at doing interviews with the departments of county stakeholders. So we're literally sitting down with department heads figuring out what your space needs are for county facilities as well as the court. And then doing all sorts of site research that I'll get into in a second. So the space needs assessment, this has identified, this has identified one hundred and twenty-three thousand square feet of need. About twenty-four thousand of that is the Circuit Court. There's a couple other spaces, District Attorney, Public Defense, these are all parts of that court function beyond the Circuit Court, and then the rest of this are the results of that, those departmental interviews. The way that this works, and I kind of want to just take one of these for an example, is we're identifying individual spaces. These spaces get added up into your department. That department then has a factor that's added to it for the spaces in between them. And so this is how we kind of get to the ultimate number. It's individual spaces, a hundred-square-foot vestibule, security station for fifty square feet, all that gets added up into the apartment. There's a scale factor that's applied to that to figure out the corridors that are going to be within that department. Then we take all of those departments, add all those up, and that gets scaled up again, and that incorporates the corridors in between those departments proper, and mechanical spaces, exterior walls, and that type of thing. So from these spaces, how much, how many offices do you need? How many full-time employees do you have? What are your storage requirements? Are you printing paper? Those interviews generate a list here that then gets scaled up to figure out what the ultimate need is for that facility. And so the next couple pages here are by department broken down what those individual spaces are. And these were reviewed internally, and then we took another stab at it with Allison and her team to figure out, to kind of equalize, to make sure that one department wasn't asking for the moon and everybody else was, you know, we're trying to regularize this and be even across the board. That results in the answer to the first question, how big is it? So from there, here's all the apartments. From there, we go to, where does it go? So our survey starts with a hundred, a hundred, a thirty, thirty-seven sites first. And these are provided to us by, by the county. We had a GIS map that was provided to us with, look at these sites, these are all potential sites. They might not all be available, but we need to figure out what is, what could it possibly land on? And I think the first criteria was just generally a site size. So when we look at sites, what we're looking at is natural hazards, so is it in a floodplain? Are there, are there landslide risks, that type of thing? And these are all readily available information in that GIS, as well as zoning. So is it zoned correctly? If it's in a residential zone, kick that one out. If it's, if it's going to be really burdensome to fix the zoning, then that's going to put it lower on that tier. What we do is end up assigning a value system to all of these criteria. So on the, on the right here, it's zoning, property class, land value, size, slope, flood risk, wildfire risk, et cetera, et cetera. Pros and cons, plus one or minus one. If it contains, if it's in a floodplain, minus one. If it's not in a floodplain, plus one. That way, we can just really quickly look at what rises to the top, and let's focus on talking about these ones. So from that list of twenty, of thirty-seven, we get down to a shortlist of eleven. That's the discussion that we have with the steering committee. Let's talk about these eleven sites. So the next couple pages is paging through the criteria and the priorities that we establish through looking at that top eleven sites. From here, the criteria, that point system is a little bit less valuable. It's, that's really just to get to the cream of the crop. We have a really robust discussion around that eleven sites. From here, we're picking five of them to go tour. So from then, we get a group of the steering committee together, along with the design team, and we go visit five of these sites, the five shortlisted sites. And that's the county courthouse, four nineteen State Street, the Wacoma Building, County Public Works, and West Endlands. So we come out here, I think it was in May or June. We all got a little bit of sunburn that day and toured around all five of these, put together a site report that puts together some of the pieces of information you're not getting from the map. You need to be on the site and see how these, what kind of infrastructure is there, what are relationships to the, to the context immediately around it, but also the county and city, city proper. One of the things we're looking at at this point in the process is what are the transportation system impacts? As we try to figure out how much is it going to cost to develop these? If a site has a lot of projects related to the TSP that might be triggered by this development, that's going to be adding to that cost. So we're trying to cast a wide net and understand what is all going to be impacting a potential development on this site. Some of them have very few TSP impacts, upgrade a sidewalk here, put some bike parking in. Other ones have much more elaborate requirements that might come with it. County Public Works here, West Endlands. Wacoma Building, interestingly, on Wacoma Building, there's two pieces to this. One, south of Industrial Way is a parking lot. That's where we're going. We ended up looking at the parking lot, can a building fit on that parking lot? But there's the existing Wacoma Building proper, which has a variety of suites within it for rent. So that was toured, looked at, and kind of evaluated. What if we just did a tenant improvement and fit some, maybe on a temporary basis, some facilities in there? That idea was ultimately not pursued, but something that was considered as we were touring available commercial real estate. Okay, so you can see we're working like a funnel here. Lots of sites, we got down to ten, we got down to five, now we do three. So we're going to do a test fit on three of these sites. And what I mean by test fitting is, we have a hundred and twenty-three thousand square feet. How does that fit on the stuff that we're talking about here? And so for this first piece, we're going to do a shortlist of three test fits, and then evaluate them, what did we learn from that, what's actually important now that we can see it on paper? We're going to do two refinements. So I'll go through the first three and kind of what we learned from those to get to that, that last two, two pieces of recommendation. For this first test fit, we're intentionally trying to cast, look at a bunch of different things from a phasing standpoint. On one site, maybe it's phased in one phase. On another site, it's two phases. And on the third site, let's find a way to provide all of the parking as surface parking. So you can see what a downtown really constrained site looks like versus one with a lot more room, that we have enough room to spread out and provide surface parking. Four nineteen State Street is mainly constrained by its building envelope, its buildable envelope. It's a slight, it's a sloped site. What we're looking at here on the top right is an interpretation of the building height limit. And so as this slopes up, there's actually a tiered limit that tiers up with that property. That ends up shaping the building. At the, at the stages of test fitting, before we get into design, and the bottom right thing is not a design, it's just, how could this massing fit on the site? That's a hundred and twenty-three thousand square feet, and what we're trying to do is shape it in a way that provides daylight. You don't want to just extrude a hundred and twenty-three thousand square feet out of the ground. Those interior spaces are going to be pretty brutal. So at this stage, there's not a lot of shaping to it. It's just from a daylight standpoint, from an access standpoint, and what's the maximum building height for this particular site. And we also carved out a little bit of space for some surface parking and started to have a conversation about, with this sloped site, what was afforded to us is the ability to have a little bit of underground parking that could be accessed at grade and then kind of go into the building. You'll start to see some diagrams like these on the left. These are called adjacency diagrams, and what we're doing are mapping the relationships of the departments and the way that access works in this building. For a courthouse to function, we need three separate forms of circulation through the building. So adults in custody can't overlap with the public and can't overlap with staff and judges. And so part of the, part of the magic of these things coming together is figuring out how those departments, how that circulation can be structured in a way that they're not interacting. So we can bring an adult in custody in one side, bring them all the way up to a court floor and have them bypass public floors, have them, have a judge come in somewhere else so that they're not seen public or adults in custody along the way. Really fundamental courthouse plan that ends up shaping the way that these buildings are kind of put together. Public Works Site, our first stab at the Public Works Site, where we ended up, looks a little bit different. This is a single-phased approach to it, so if we took all of this and built it all at once, it would sit on the site maybe something like this. The questions that arise out of the Public Works Site is, you need another access point onto the site for the sheriff. You need two ways in and out of this site. If one gets blocked via a protest or something, emergency vehicles need to be able to egress from that site. There's only one here now, so one of the main things was locating where this extra entrance might go. This site is kind of socketed into the ground a little bit, so we need to provide a ramp that comes down into the site. You'll see it on the right side of this image here, kind of mid-block. The first time we did it, we aligned it with an existing intersection. Based on some of the feedback, we actually took another look at that because it's pretty disruptive through the planning, had it come in right in the middle. An adjacency diagram for that particular layout. And then thirdly, Wacoma, this is our phased approach, our first stab at a phased approach. So if we were to build just the Circuit Court DA and Public Defense in Phase One in green, and then build everything else in a Phase Two, how, how could that exist on the site? This site ends up being pretty constrained with, with parking as well, a little bit of surface parking. Ultimately, our discussion revolved around utilizing a lot of the potential surface parking across the street that exists already. Okay, almost there. Detailed site analysis. So this is where we take the three, and we're going to take two of them and refine them. What we learned was our phasing, we wanted to make sure that between the two sites, we're looking at them apples to apples, and so having the same phase approach for both sites. We started with just the Circuit Court DA and Public Defense in Phase One because that's what the state would contribute money to. What we learned was, if we can take all of the uses out of the existing courthouse, then that can be monetized and potentially sold and offset some of the cost of a project. So Phase One was revised and detailed site analysis in this next piece that we're looking at to add the other facilities that are in that, that it could be completely removed in Phase One. That can be then potentially sold. And then Phase Two are the remaining, the remaining pieces. So I'll talk through that in a second. On Public Works, the other piece we learned was, looks like a huge site, looks like a wide expansive County Public Works Site. We would have to deal with the existing County Public Works buildings. And for now, what we've done is we've tallied up what that total square footage is as of, as of now. It wasn't in the scope of this project to do space pen for County Public Works. So for now, we've used just a one-to-one replacement. If we're going to remove this much square footage, we need to find space for that exact amount of square footage somewhere else. If we're to do planning in the future to figure out what the needs are for that, it might be a little bit different than what you have now. And if you were to build it all at one time, it might be, there might be a more efficient way to configure it. So in teal on the left, these are just the county-owned tax lots in that larger site. The gray is actually a public right-of-way that bisects the site pretty, pretty well, and then red is kind of a no-fly zone. That's city public works areas, and so we avoided that completely. So that really constrained down where we could build. And we looked at that revised phasing idea. So the, on the right here, we'll try to zoom in and we'll see if it works. Oh, it doesn't, okay. On the right is where it used to be a small piece of green, large piece of teal. Now it's, they're about one-to-one. So that first phase grew a little bit in order to be able to utilize the existing courthouse afterwards. What would be in that is the courthouse, DA, victim assistance, public defense. What we added to it was juvenile, sheriff parole, probation, and emergency management. In Phase Two would be human resources assessment, records, election, technology services, dispatch, community development administration, budget, finance, and health department. So that's how these two kind of pieces get, get split up between a Phase One and a Phase Two. And then what I'll pause here with is, within this detailed site analysis section, is the overlay of the additional things that we would start to think about as you get into design. So these, what we, what we take is this simple kind of block massing, which is just, what does a hundred and twenty-three thousand square feet even look like on the site? This takes that and says, this is a way it might get articulated. This takes that and says, this is a way you, it might get articulated just as a means for people to understand the scale of this. This is not a design, it's just a way to articulate the building to give an understanding of, how big is that block? So, just a caveat to say, it's not designed, it's just to start to overlay parking requirements, setback requirements, um, uh, stormwater, that type of thing. There's an acknowledgement of the other things that are going to have to happen on site. Lastly, what we're looking at here is how the public and staff would have come onto the site and how it's accessed. So there's some, some thought within the report that kind of delineates um, uh, the way that the public are going to come in, park here, access the building, separate from a secure entrance for staff and judges somewhere else. That separate circulation path really starts at a site level with how people are approaching the building. So you want to separate on one side, ideally, public on another side, secure, and then they're coming in from, from separate sides. Kind of the, some of the big ideas that we're looking at, that's still. Okay, so for Wacoma. One-to-one, so same idea, uh, same phasing idea where we were adjusting um, court, public defense, D A into the, the additional department. So this is um, the exact same size of Phase One and Phase Two that we're just looking at, how that sits on the site. From here, when, when we looked at this and said, well, what about parking we need to provide? We can't just ignore parking on this. If we're going to provide parking on Public Works, you need to be providing parking on the Wacoma Site as well. Surface parking that's afforded in between these two buildings is not enough. Um, we need to, to bring online the surface parking across the street as well as uh, we looked at a parking garage. So this next slide has a parking garage added to that, that's in the cost estimate. This is a, a parking garage with um, the staff and secure parking, which you would probably want adjacent to the building, not having public uh, public parking that close to your, to your courthouse. Public parking would be across the street. And so this, this provides a real one-to-one comparison of the Wacoma Parking Site to the Public Works Site. Okay, here we are. So the nature of that story is, on the left, Wacoma Phase One, construction costs about ninety-six million. That gets scaled up with soft costs. Thirty-five percent soft costs, those are permit fees, things that the owner would be paying in addition to what they're paying to the contractor. Uh, design fees are included in this, furniture is included in that. But a thirty-five percent soft cost is also a negotiation, we just have to take that as a starting place. Site acquisition, some acknowledgement of what that current land value is, brings you to a hundred and thirty-four million for Wacoma Phase One. These are also escalated to the future, future dollars. So, an important piece of this is these occur at different times, and I, I realize that this will be a little bit confusing, but uh, Wacoma. These prices are in uh, twenty, twenty-nine dollars. Public Works are in twenty, thirty-two dollars. Um, so if we were to pursue Public Works, we acknowledge that the County Public Works Buildings need to first be replaced. Building, therefore building Phase One would occur later in time. If you were to build on Wacoma, you could build sooner in time because you're not finding where else to put County Public Works. So the cost scale a little bit higher here, you can see ninety-six versus a hundred and nine. The other thing that goes into that cost difference is, it's a much larger site, there's more site development to happen with just a larger site. At the scale that we're talking about here, at the phases that we're talking about here, it's really cost per square foot. And so uh, we're not adding up bits and bobs in the building. It's, the site's bigger, there's going to be a little bit more site development cost to that. Later on in design, once we figure out what exactly that, that design is and goes into it, the cost estimate then gets a little bit more detailed and, and has a, a finer boundary around um, how you get to that number. The final number for Public Workspace, one hundred and fifty-three million um, for in twenty, 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 thirty-two dollars. Uh, the chart below this starts to break down for your convenience, the state components to facilitate a discussion with O J D about what portion of this large building would be eligible for that fifty percent match. So we've looked at it two ways, one, that fifty percent match as is current legislation. And then um, if it is useful to you in the future, what a larger percentage match might be, should O J D legislation change? So we've looked at a seventy-five percent match, if Good River could get additional money beyond that fifty percent. Um, that's what that proportion would be. So that, this uh, chart below, the cost estimate, um, starts to break down some of that work for this. Parallel to all of this was real estate analysis that was being done by W T Partnership that figured out costs of existing county uh, properties. Um, what the values of some of those would be. So ultimately, this is in volume one of the appendix there, really extensive report, lots of detail to figure out what those real estate values are. But ultimately, they looked at this building and they looked at uh, the existing courthouse building, which is um, more than likely the most valuable piece of property the county owns. And so it's about eleven to twelve million dollars for the estimated in that report for the existing county courthouse. So there's a pro forma page within the volume one of W T Partnership's report that takes these costs that we're looking at and kind of says, and this is what you'd offset by emptying out the courthouse and potentially getting eleven to twelve million dollars for that. And then there's a separate cost for this building as well, but if it's, that would be for future piece two. Further detail of all of this is in the other appendices, so there's a full cost estimate that kind of breaks down all of that information. But I think from a large scale, um, that, that's where we, that's where we end our report here is what, what your um, what your Phase One cost will be, the full, full cost estimates are, are included um, further down in the report. Happy to go through any of those, or if you've got questions to start.
Thank you. We've done a lot of work, we, I went for that earlier meeting where we had more uh, very looking for.
Hmm, hmm, one of the early, when we, when we.
Five, I think.
Oh, yeah.
Now it's generic.
Yes, yes, yes.
It's interesting to see you to drill down.
Yeah.
Um, so who, do we have questions?
I have, uh, one uh, general question, uh, you provided um, an appendix with a bunch of of um, financial information, all of those, they market, et cetera. Um, it tons of really interesting stuff in there, but I'm wondering um, what what's the short version of what we should conclude? Were you trying, were, were you trying to make a case? Or what the future is going to look like, and if so, what is the answer?
The, the short of that is to establish what um, estimated value of the two sites that W T Partnership evaluated and that got to that uh, eleven to twelve million dollars for the courthouse and about seven million for this. That analysis is the background information that then informs of how they get to values for this as also, and also the, the site acquisition costs for, for these sites that we looked at.
In that same analysis, can you kind of include about what the effect is in the way in this project?
Um, the site escalation, the, the price escalation is, is as a line item, it's pretty significant as, as you look at the cost estimates line by line, there is a singular line that says, esca, these are in today's dollars and then escalation to this date. And it's, it's, you know, five percent per year roughly. Um, as you look at that report, we've said our midpoint of construction is going to be twenty-twenty-nine. The midpoint of construction for this one's going to be twenty-thirty-two, and then Phase Two is going to be even beyond that. So the first part that we take is, if you do the whole thing now, that's the cheapest it's ever going to be. If you phase it, the first part's going to be cheap, but the second part's going to be more expensive, just be purely from an escalation standpoint.
So we're confused about that, that's why I thought it said, but then I saw other uh, examples that show, or other diagrams that show construction costs declining, or potentially declining, and um, commercial real estate stolen. Is I misreading that?
Um, potentially, I'd, I'd have to go um, look into that to see.
Cause it seems like, I mean, there are some arguments, which I, I don't really bet on anything, but there are some arguments that say that we're kind of at a at a bubble for commercial, commercial real estate and that the demand is dropping, especially with you were uh, with businesses not needing as much commercial real estate space and construction went up so fast, so quickly. Uh, I know the only construction project I've been involved in recently, uh, which is that's, you know, seven bids including three that were below the engineering estimate.
Hmm.
Um, so I'm was there, so, but you're saying, you, you were trying to make any points about that?
No, and, and if uh, I would need to, to cross-reference with W T Partnership to, to get a real answer on that. But in, in our experience, the, the commercial real estate prices may not also be analogous to what it costs to construct new things. I don't think we've ever seen construction costs go down, they've only gone up year over year. If anything, they just slowed down as they go up.
But that's kind of a question, so obviously, you know, the statement, it will never be as cheap as it is today, is basically a statement that there will always be inflation, and, and I get that. Uh, but there are times at which you wouldn't want to be in a missed a construction project, and there are other times where you would, and um, I've seen some arguments that this is just really not the time for the building a major construction project. Or maybe this is a good time to be planning it, uh, with the expectation that the market will, will correct some.
I, I see that Sophie added my colleagues to the, to the panel here, so if um, Adam or Steven, you had comments on, on that line of questioning. I think you can unmute yourself at this point.
There was hoping for a ton of discussion, I just.
Yeah.
Yeah, hey, hey, this is uh, this is Adam with the Concord Group and, and W T, how you guys doing? Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, great, um, yeah, I mean, I think um, I, I don't know what specifically you're referencing. I would, I would concur with what Mitch is saying that I mean, in my twenty-plus years of being in the development advisory industry, um, it's, it's pretty rare if like never to see cost estimates go down year over year. Uh, you, you might have some blips, right, like during a, a significant downturn, where you might see some some reduction, but I would echo what, what he's saying, which is that there is a, there is sometimes a disconnect between value of buildings or value of rent or value of real estate overall and the cost to construct. And so, yeah, I mean, certainly in our analysis, doing the pro forma work, we're, we're assuming that costs will escalate, not, not stay flat or de, or, or de-escalate.
Does that get silver, okay?
Yeah, that's right, I, I thought you might be trying to communicate something, it sounds like you weren't.
Oh, no.
So I was just reading into it.
Yep, more expensive over time, I think.
Yep.
Anything else?
Are there any more questions? Um, are you going to be around?
Yeah.
Later, because during our business uh, part of our meeting, we'll be discussing this, so.
Yeah, I'll, I'll stay around for that, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Adam.
And the next thing we have is the sheriff giving us an update of what's going on in his department. And I see a lot of people from your department here, thank you for coming.
Efficient today.
I know, we're ahead of time.
We'll see.
Yeah, one of the things I was going to talk about. Thank you, yeah.
Efficiency.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Awesome, and thanks for coming.
Yeah, thanks Commissioners, thanks for the opportunity, I appreciate it. So the first thing I wanted to do is I just wanted to uh, acknowledge Commissioner Weathers and Chair Uer. Um, Commissioner Weathers and I have been working very closely uh, at Norcore. Um, we appreciated that. Uh, Partnership, we continue to work through the funding challenges and have good discussions there and um, maybe have a resolution or something to present coming up in the next month or so, so.
You solved everything?
There'll be some, there'll be packages, so. Thanks to this guy, thanks, guys, and.
Thank you for that acknowledgement, and please don't put words in my mouth just yet.
No words, just, I appreciate that partnership, so. And then Chair Uer and I have uh, been meeting monthly, um, I found it really beneficial and um, really appreciate our conversations, and we usually have really robust conversations, that probably run even longer than we anticipate, but.
I think so.
Yeah. But I appreciate that, so, so thank you. Um, the first thing I wanted to, to talk about today is the sheet that I just kind of handed out, and it's just a bit of an overview. Um, and this is um, more specific to our general fund uh, programs, because we do have programs that are outside of general funds and special revenue, et cetera. Uh, the first thing that's important um, is the, the sheriff mandated services. So those sher, those services are services that are required by Oregon law uh, for the sheriff to uh, to provide. So that's enforcement, uh, enforcement is our patrol, our investigations. Then civil and C H L, uh, so all sheriffs have to have a civil division, have to issue concealed handgun licenses, have to process civil papers, et cetera. The sheriffs must provide a jail, um, and there is, we've done a lot of discussion about that and the mandates and kind of how that looks in the state of Oregon, and there's, in some areas, not a lot of wiggle room. Search and rescue is also a mandated service, and then uh, court security and, and transport. So the other services that are under the umbrella of the Sheriff's Office, nine-one-one, parole and probation, emergency management and animal control. The first three, the county has to provide, you have to provide some level of nine-one-one, some level of parole and probation, and then emergency management. The sheriff doesn't have to do that, though, so those are services that historically, since before I was sheriff, um, three of the four of those, the, the sheriff has uh, basically been assigned or asked by the county, hey, can you handle these? And it makes good sense, frankly, because there are efficiencies created. And then in two thousand and fourteen is when parole and probation became a division of the Sheriff's Office, and that had gone through several iterations. Since nineteen ninety-six, when that service went to the county, the county had tried to run it in a multitude of different ways. And then when we were, uh, took that program over in two thousand and fourteen, uh, it's been the same um, management or oversight since then.
Where did it come from in ninety-six, was that a legislative change, or get from the state?
It, it was Commissioner, it was Senate Bill eleven forty-five, uh, so before that, the setup was much like the state of Washington is today, so felony cases were actually handled by the state. And, and in Oregon, it was Oregon Department of Corrections, and so the P O's, the probation officers in those offices actually were state employees. And then uh, the counties did misdemeanor supervision at the time, and then, and so it was a bifurcated system that they combined. Eleven forty-five, they said, uh, hey, counties, we're going to give you money to operate this, but it's all on you now, essentially, and um, we've seen ups and downs, and obviously during this budget cycle, we saw a significant downturn with loss of staff and significant funding shortfalls. And that's always a topic in conversation at the state level, and I anticipate that in February, when the short session starts, I know it's on a list because the state's looking at robust uh, cuts during mid-biennium cuts, which are um, a bit scary, so we'll be paying close attention to that. So then we get into uh, enforcement staffing, so enforcement, our enforcement budget, the bulk of it is general fund, it's forty-eight oh one is the fund number. Um, and so within that, there are thirteen deputies that cover Hidra County Patrol. Uh, and they do the twenty-four-seven, three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year, that's, that's full staffing is thirteen. We have one contract deputy and that's funded by the City of Cascade Box. And then we have three detectives, and we have one deputy that's funded uh, by the Oregon State Marine Board, that was a full-time position until this fiscal year, when we also took uh, thirty percent cut off the top of that program. In order to make NSME, um, we eliminated a position within uh, the Forest Patrol uh, arena and moved our current off-highway vehicle enforcement deputy, which is a retired halftime deputy into Forest Patrol, and he was doing the O H V, the off-highway vehicle enforcement, and then we've combined those two programs to make NSME. Uh, and that other program is funded by um, the Oregon Parks and Rec District, uh, or Department, and we've, we've had that. And we've, we've had that program, I think, since two thousand and ten or eleven, they've been providing funding for that.
And so that's the Forest Patrol one?
No, that's the off highway vehicle enforcement. Yeah, so Forest Patrol is funded by U S Forest Service.
Thanks.
And those are called cooperative, cooperative law enforcement agreements. And then we have a point eight uh, F T that is school resource deputy, that's a cost share. Uh, fifty fifty cost share with the Hood River County School District. Um, and it's important to note that point eight F T is actually a retired, uh, pers retired deputy. And so that position has a lot less pers liability, um, because it, that person's already retired. And then the um, halftime deputy, which is now doing, uh, he's now doing U S Forest Service. He's also retired, pers retired and works about twenty hours a week. And then we have one full time animal control deputy, but that fund is a special revenue fund right now, so um, separate budget. So just to kind of look at um, what our enforcement picture. Looks like every year. Um, I just took last year's calls for an example. So uh, we feel that uh, eleven thousand, six hundred and eighty five calls. Uh, in our enforcement division and so seventy one percent of those calls are requests for assistance. So those are calls coming in to our dispatch center asking um, for a deputy to respond. And so that equates to right around eighty two, eighty three hundred calls there. And then the other twenty nine percent were deputy initiated, so things like vehicle stops, suspicious uh, activity. Um, self initiated checks on businesses, residents, et cetera, so.
Are those, are those numbers pretty uh, consistent year to year?
No, um, I would say, so the only dip that we have seen was in twenty twenty, twenty twenty one during COVID. Um, everybody was locked in their homes, everybody was distancing and we weren't getting as many calls.
But otherwise, it's pretty consistent.
It consistently raises. So we've even seen increases of almost twenty percent.
Since?
Um, going back to like twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, some of those years, we saw really remarkable increases in the calls coming in. Uh, and that's our measuring stick really for workload. That's our workload analysis. So how many calls are we taking? Because calls take a certain amount of time as working in a rural area. Um, with the very low staffing numbers, you, um, it takes you longer um, to get to those calls and it takes you longer to clear those calls. And um, so but that's really, we pay a lot of attention to that. Uh, so how many incoming calls we're getting and um, you know, if there's any anomalies or things like that. But there's really been, except for those couple of years, there's really been a consistent increase that we've seen across the board. So and so the other kind of important number there is we provide. Direct patrol services to about fifteen thousand, six hundred residents of Hood River County. And when I, I'm gonna talk a little bit um, about kind of some comparisons and just to give you a little bit of economy to scale, so to speak. Um, but that's pretty significant because if you look next door at Wasco County, for instance, their population is a couple thousand people more than us. They're about twenty six, five or so right now, depending on, you know, how accurate those numbers are, but a couple thousand more than us. But their direct policing services, they provide direct service to five thousand less people than us. Because the city of the Dals has grown so much and so the bulk of their population is in that population center. But Hood River County is a little bit unique because more people live outside of this, of the city.
What is direct patrol service exactly?
So those are where we're the primary call. So if you live in the city of Hood River, if you call nine one one, the primary agency that's gonna respond to that call is the city police. And then outside of that, it's the sheriff's office.
Did you include the city of Cascade Locks in that?
Correct.
So, uh, on which side?
Yeah, so they're part of the fifteen, five ninety eight, yeah. Because we had, so our deputy, um, we, the, that's a great point. The contract that they pay for is in addition to the base service.
Okay, so enhanced service?
Correct, yeah, and that's for um, a minimum of twenty five, twenty four hours extra per week. And for that, they pay the full freight of a deputy. Um, so they pay a hundred percent of a deputy's cost, but understanding that there's gonna be training, um, time off, et cetera. Um, the minimum is twenty four hours a week additional patrol. Anytime outside of that, we've got whoever's on duty is responding to those calls or down patrolling those areas. So in um, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, there was a lot of discussion about the sheriff's office and services and levels of service. And um, one of the things that we talked about, you know, what I talked about with the commission and and meetings was. What reality looked like in today's world and what our staffing looked like. And so there was a a commitment at that time, because we're, you know, now in the twenty first century, that things have changed enough that there was a commitment. By the commission that we need to achieve two deputy minimum. So that means we have two deputies working twenty four hours a day, seven days a week. However, the reality is um, that in order for us today to achieve that twenty four hour coverage. We have to do single deputy coverage and that's every day. So every day during parts of shifts, there's just one deputy covering the county. And um, so that, you know, obviously creates some strains. Um, if you've got people that are sick or. We, you know, employ human beings and so they take vacation times or um, you know, there's, there's different things. So that certainly creates some challenges, but that's reality. That's, that's staffing reality right now.
And what date were you saying that was the commitment?
Well, we've had to do that my, almost the entirety of my career. Is single deputy coverage. The goal was doubled. The goal was two and that was in nineteen twenty one.
Okay, not in.
Fiscal year nineteen twenty, somewhere in there. So when we were talking about all of these funding measures and that was the, that was the goal. It's like, listen, you know, we need to do this because that's um, it's just kind of basic safety stuff, so. So where we sit today, uh, unfortunately is, um, we have five open. Uh, scheduled spots, um, due to things like injury, illness, protected leave, uh, military leave. And we have uh, one person that um, left our agency to a, to another agency yesterday. And that was a supervisor. And then we have two other deputies that have applied and are in background investigations with other agencies as well. Um, and so. We've got five scheduled spots, so we need to figure out how to, how to fill because we anticipate that um, those are probably gonna be. A fairly significant amount of time.
Uh, do those come out of the thirteen or which, which of these lines in the staffing do the?
Yeah, so those all uh, all, let's see.
Where are the openings?
Well, I don't wanna call some of it out, to be honest, but um, but the hands down bulk, yes. So as of, as of today, before some of the other things that happened, we're already down to ten. In of that thirteen, um, but we're below that.
But the five come out of this list.
Correct.
So you're not fully staffed?
No. No, um, and you know, some of the people aren't, they're not intending to leave. They're just on a protected leave or they're gonna be on some long term leave. And so that schedule spot's open and we have to figure out how we, how we're gonna fill that.
Yeah, was there, was there a time in the last year or two when you actually were fully staffed?
On paper.
Could you say what that means?
Yeah, yes, we had all of our positions filled, but um, I think I, I can't remember if I've talked recently about this. But when we hire a new deputy, we can plan on at least a year. So from the time that you advertise until the time that they're out of training, it's, it's a year. Uh, and so. Year, they're on the books, um, and. You know, if you, you don't have any positions to hire, but they're not able to fill one of those spots alone. So they're with a train, where they're at the police academy or whatever, you know, it takes, it's a long process.
And when was the last time that you were at that?
So um, we were full staff deputies, this, uh, I think it was about a year ago. We hired our last position, um, and then he went through training and made it through. And then was solo um, for. Uh, a few weeks and then got called out on military leave and has been gone ever since.
And you had talked uh, in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty timeframe, you talked about that you'd be able, that, that. Retention would be improved uh, in salary actions, basically. How has that worked and where?
Yeah, you know, I think commissioner, for the most part, that did work and particularly in um. The first years of the levy, we saw a lot of people come back. Um, we saw, we had a uh, really. Really robust um. Lateral programs, so laterals are previously certified, certified either in Oregon or other states, and so they don't have to go to the academy.
Right.
And so we saw many lateral candidates at that time. Um, several that used to work here in the past come back, uh, and then some from other agencies that were interested in coming here. Um, because the pay disparity just wasn't as big of an issue. Um, you know, we're not the highest paid, but we're not the lowest paid. And so it's just being in market and I think that was the, that, it was a game changer.
And concerning the levels, do we have any policy of any bonuses or anything like that to?
We do not.
Draw people, wouldn't that be a sensible thing, given that there, you don't have the year of training to go through?
I, I think it would and I think, you know, those are things we've explored with H R in the past. Uh, yeah, I was looking at Multnomah County where we're, we have two deputies that that are applying at Multnomah County.
Right.
Um, there's a big pay disparity. I mean, they advertise that first year deputies make an average of a hundred and four thousand a year. We started about sixty five thousand a year, um, but they also, and they're also doing moving incentives and they're doing, you know, uh.
Right.
Things like that. And so, yeah, we could certainly look at that because that, the other thing about laterals is you, you pay them based on experience.
Right.
So if you've got seven, somebody with seven years of experience, they're not gonna start at step one. And if there's an incentive, as we know, one of our barriers here for all employment is the cost of living.
Right.
Uh, and so as a result, a lot of our folks don't live here. Uh, they'll live in Wasco County or in the region, hopefully. What we really, the other thing, you know, that we were really blessed to see is historically, we had been getting a lot of people from. Out of area and so they would come here and then stay for a short time and then head back to where they were from. Or they just didn't have roots here. We've been really fortunate uh, in the last few years to hire local people. Um, local or in the region where they have roots, they have housing, they have family, they're established. We, we hired a lot of people that are uh, older, uh, that are in their thirties and forties, that were experienced, that had other careers. And, and so they were. And, and that was, that was a good thing. It was a good thing. And so we've been fortunate in that respect. But unfortunately, we, this is, this is cyclical. Um, we see this because uh, other places start paying a whole bunch more. There's been a lot of competition in the metro area between uh, the three main metro counties as far as what they're paying. And they just keep one upping each other and they're actually passing people back and forth, but it also draws from the outside. So it unfortunately cyclical, but then we see things like this. You know, we've got two or three people that have applied elsewhere, but then it seems like Murphy's Law sets in and then we'll have injuries or long term. You know, things that cause people to be gone.
You use the term cyclical, I guess, I'm not, I'm not sure. It, it just feels like that's something we can never win at. We can't out compete the three. Portland City, uh, Portland Metro Area Counties.
Well, I think that's one of the challenges we've all, you know, on many levels, it's not just public safety. That competition because it, it's, there's a lot of people that drive there. I mean, that's one of the problems with these two deputies that apply with Multnomah County. They're gonna have take home cars from Multnomah County and they're gonna live in Hood River County. Uh, and so that's unfortunate.
And you don't see any um. Anything ending that cycle? I mean, will, won't those companies run out of money?
I, I.
Seriously, there is.
Yeah.
It can't, it just can't go on forever, right?
Yeah, I don't know. Um, I don't know if anything's gonna end it, but again, you see these, you know, some, some counties do a whole lot of recruiting at one time. And they'll have this mass exodus from other agencies that are going to this one and then it's somebody else's turn. We're always gonna struggle with our proximity to the metro area, I think, because that's our, that's our cost of labor competition. Even though we can't compete with that.
Yeah.
So it's really trying to provide the best working environment for our folks. Um, it's trying to provide um, good solid leadership and ensuring that um, there's stability there. And that there's safety and that we're really caring for our folks. And I think there's a lot of things that we can do as a county. Um, and I think I will just give a shout out to our new H R team that's sitting in the back. I'm super excited about those two, um, bring a ton of fresh ideas and I'm really invigorated by my discussions thus far. And so I feel pretty confident, uh, you know, that hopefully we can continue down the right path to um, ensure retention. Cause I, it's been a countywide problem, not the sheriff's.
When you get together with all the other sheriffs in the, in the state, you guys don't have a, you, you can't like strong arm those guys? No, you have a solution there and uh.
They apologize.
They apologize. I, I'm just trying to understand where their commissions get the money. I talked to their commissioners and they sure don't seem to be floating in, in, in revenue sources.
Yeah, I think it's, you know, and you look at some of the general fund contributions in those counties and they are significant. Talking to the Clark County Sheriff recently and I mean, she has a pretty robust public safety levy, but she's also forty eight percent of the general fund.
Right.
Uh, and that's significant and, and then they've got the courthouse issue and that kind of thing, but they, you know, they, she didn't negotiate that contract.
Right.
Uh, you know, number one, it was negotiated by the previous commission. And so then she said, I don't know how we're gonna pay for this. It's great for staffing.
The courthouse.
Well, no, the, like, the, the C B A that they, like a bargaining agreement. So I think, you know, it may be challenging going down the road. I know there's already, you know, fiscal challenges certainly, so. Um, but yeah, I think that's a good point because we're, there's a lot of similarities around the state with these fiscal challenges. I don't know about sustainability, you know.
Yeah, it just seems like the fever has to break with that. The metro area can, cannot keep on. They don't have endless resources to, to pay these bills. Thanks.
Yep, Sheriff, um, you, you've listed, you know, the staffing and. So in your words, when life happens, somebody goes and leaves sick, whatever happens. Is there ability to move people from those other lines into other functions? Um, and obviously maybe some couldn't be up, but. And I hate to use the word up or down, but, well, just throwing it out. Would the detective pool have the ability to um, patrol if we were really short?
Well, one of you would mention it because somebody sitting behind me in uniform is actually a detective covering patrol today, so yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we have to balance workload. Um, we have three detectives, detectives because we have that workload. One of the things that we started doing again is the Mid-Columbia Agency Narcotics Team um, is back up and running. You know, after uh, measure one ten, those teams kind of became defunct. But then um, when four thousand two passed a couple fiscal years ago, or uh, or legislative cycles ago. Um, those teams are, are back in action and so our, that team is extremely busy. Um, they're doing search warrants almost every week. Uh, and so there is a lot of activity um, there. And then just our regular um, major crimes, child abuse, uh, sex crimes, et cetera, um, keeps them very busy. So, uh, but yes, to answer your question, um, and there's been times frankly, when uh, in. About twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, where we were down a bunch of people and the undersheriff and I were working seven days a week. We were put on weekend patrol shows by ourselves. Um, that's not very good business because we're a little higher liability for several reasons. But yeah, I mean, we, we do what we can to make ends meet, but it's just um. These times really stretch you thin. Uh, and that even with that thirteen deputy, when you're full staff, uh, it, you're stretched. And one of the ways we do our staffing is so they work, deputies work ten hour shifts. Um, but positive to the ten hour shifts is you have overlap. So we have, we look at our calls. We look at, uh, there's certainly different times and different days when you have higher call volumes. And so you wanna put more staffing towards those times. And then you can maybe get away with having less staffing when you're not seeing those calls. There's gonna be the anomaly, but in general. You're, you have lower call volumes during these times. It also creates an overlap day, one day a week, where we're able to really minimize the use of overtime. Um, and the use of uh, having to move people's shows around and so that's a training day. Um, if you're not aware, we have, we're required by law to get eighty four hours of training minimum in a three year cycle. And so we try to do a large portion of that in house. And so we have a lot of trainers, we have a lot of ability to do some of these trainings that you're mandated to do, and then. We're, we have the ability to bring trainers in sometimes for less cost than sending people out. Uh, we certainly um, send people out from time to time, um, because it's good to get out and get. Uh, information from other sources, but we're able to do a lot of that in-house. And so that's an efficiency, it's a cost savings. And so that's. Uh, you know, part of that scheduling helps with that and helps keep those costs.
Was that different than some of the other um, sheriff's departments around the state doing it more in-house than?
No, I think uh, it kind of depends on agency size and it depends, some, some uh. Sheriff's offices have full-time training people. Uh, they have full-time training divisions, they have full-time, they have. Full training areas, buildings, et cetera. Uh, we, we make it work. Um. I think in two thousand fourteen-ish, uh, we were able to do a, a. Spacewalk with courts at the courthouse. And so that training room that I think most of you have been in used to be court space. It was shared space. We had a file with them and then we were able to take a wall down. Um, we did some significant in-house work so that we, it's kind of a multi-purpose room now, so we can do a lot of our training in that room. But it also uh, doubles as a physical training area. So we were able to get a grant. Uh, that from the Hutter Reliance that funded all of our mats, uh, that we can make that into a mat room and we can do a lot of physical training. In fact. Um, Cherry, you or saw that uh, last month, I believe, that are doing some training and just, we poked our head in real quick. So. We're able to do that with the space. Before it was even more difficult, we'd have to rent gyms or, or whatever. So that's been really helpful.
Do you participate in the physical training or?
I try not to, to, to uh.
When the chief justice visited, we did a courthouse tour, that was a part of, of what we saw there. So, we can talk about the, um, the activity generated by Mint. Um, how does that fit into the stats that you report? Because that's, you're not generating calls, right?
Correct.
So where, where do we see that?
You're going to see that in reports and um, arrests. Uh, sometimes those cases, you're in it for the longer. Call, if that makes sense. So you're, you know, start at point A because you want to get to Z. And so you may not see, you may see some reports, but you may not see arrests until you're down the road. And then you may see one report that has four, whatever, ten arrests.
Okay, so I'm just trying to figure out how, if, if I'm, you know, looking at numbers and trying to track uh, trends over time. I would kind of have to talk to Matt, is that how it works? Or, Matt Ellis, I'm pointing to him in the back, sorry, yeah.
Well, I think, you know, Mint certainly keeps stats and, you know, you have to remember it's multi-county.
Right.
Um, but uh, you know, they have some statistics. So if there's a point where you want to hear specific things about Mint. And the impacts of that team, we can certainly um, put that together.
Just understanding trends is what I'm, what I'm just trying to absorb a lot from all the stuff you're throwing at us and. No, no, this is exactly what I love. Um, uh, and so with, uh, I'm. Trying to build a model in my head of how Mint works and what impacted us on our budget and what impact it has on activities in the county and what, what, what. Uh, you know, we're talking about things to generate workload and trying to understand how that works.
Sure. Yeah, and I think it's also important to note that that, the detective that is working with Mint. Also is doing Hutter County cases and still that general detective caseload. Um, so particularly where there's um, a need, they, it's Hutter County first.
Right.
Uh, and, and so that will never change because they're not away on, in some farmland. It's Hutter County first. And then uh, it's the Mint activities, um, and, and it's the same with the other agencies.
Right.
Um, you know, it's coordinating, working together. And again, it's one of those um, examples. Like Norfolk where the counties have come together, combined resources and get a bigger bank than fuck.
I guess the, the point I'm getting at, you're making a decision to put resources into there because you see a clear value to that. Uh, and I'm uh, hoping that you can, you know, over time communicate to us that what that value is and, 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 and. You know, why you've made that decision.
Okay, yep.
Yeah, thanks again for, for the report. I'm, I don't know if this is possible or not, but just thinking about the support that your team needs and. Uh, is there an opportunity to contract with city police to help support when there's not enough resources? Like now that you have five openings, is that, I don't know if that's possible or?
Yeah, there, I mean, it's a different um, different mission. They're not in a lot better position, frankly. I mean, they do a lot of single officer coverage. Uh, they have an administrative coverage for a lot of their shifts. Um, we certainly work together. Um, if there's a, you know, a very. High priority call during a time when there's low staffing, then. Oftentimes both agencies are going to respond, and the city's been really good about that, responding out of the county when we have one deputy on and vice versa. Because when they have one officer on, like, we're going to respond down here. So the, that type of coordination happens. Um, the other thing that's kind of important to note is that Oregon State Police doesn't provide twenty-four hour coverage, um, and they haven't. Geez, probably since about two thousand two, two thousand four, somewhere in that range. Uh, and so they are there as a resource sometimes, but. So one of the things, uh, actually Cherry Ure and I were talking about last week was, was overtime. And just to kind of, she thought it might be helpful to kind of explain how overtime works. In public safety and what that actually means and what the impact is. So. First thing is there are ten uh, holidays in the collective bargaining agreement. Um, so there's ten holidays. Uh, if somebody works on those holidays, uh, per the CBA, they have to pay double time now. So you're paying out of your regular uh, personnel line, I don't know, and you're paying out of your overtime. So we have to weigh that. This is a time of year where we've got three holidays coming up, right? So we've got um, Thanksgiving, Christmas. Uh, New Year's, they all fall on Thursday this year. Well, Thursday happens to be our overlap day, which like, oh, man. Uh, and so you're working back from those, but the reality of overtime, not very many people that want to work it. Uh, because you're away from your family, you're away from your time off, but it's a reality. That's how we make ends meet. And so. When you've got shifts that um, are single deputy coverage, like I mentioned before, if somebody's sick. Uh, if they're at training, if they're on vacation, you've got to cover it. Uh, we can, we've, our sergeants do a really good job of being. Um, of moving people around, uh, if we can get people to trade shifts. Uh, so if I work this for you, then I'll work this for you. Um, and then that, you know, will minimize overtime. Or moving people, but we have some timelines that we have to adhere to that are uh, dictated by the collective bargaining agreement. So you've got ten-day rules and fourteen-day rules and things like that about who the people are on. We're in a position right now where we've got to move somebody from weekdays to weekends. Um, they bid their shifts. And they plan their life around the fact that they're going to have weekends off this quarter. And, you know, we've got holidays coming up, but the reality is, is we're going to have to take them and move them to weekends because we've got a shortage that. You can't fill uh, with overtime, but that still creates issues because you're shortchanging the weekday shift. And so. Um, so overtime isn't uh. It's not a bonus. Hey, we'll give you some overtime. It's, it's, hey, how are we going to make that twenty-four hour coverage? Hey, how are we going to do this transport? Uh, we have court transports come in. It's kind of feast or famine. Sometimes we won't have any for a month, and sometimes we'll get. Six or eight that we have to schedule. And if we can do it with our regular folks, great, but if we only have one or two people working, then we're going to have to call somebody in to do those transports. Um, it's court time. So if you're on your day off and you get called in to grand jury on Friday morning, um, you get, you get. Two or three, four hours of overtime for coming in on your day off. Um, it's going to trial if you're working nights and you've got a day trial. And so those things compound, and that's how overtime is used. It's to cover, um, it's to, to make ends meet frankly, and to try to hit our marks and what we've promised to the community. And the coverage and things like that, that they've come to expect. So, um, you know, hopefully that helps, uh, you know, understanding of. Why that's so important. And then we get into times like this where we've got five holes in the schedule. Um, we've, our sergeants have done a really good job thus far of managing our overtime budget. We've only utilized about twenty percent of it right now. Uh, but that's without a lot of holidays and, and um, a lot of holes in the schedule. Well, we just went from zero to a hundred in that respect. Uh, and so I, that's something that I'm really concerned about, uh, in this budget cycle is. Um, staying within those guardrails. Just with shortages last year, we. Uh, expended about a hundred and thirty-three thousand in overtime. This year, we only had a budget of eighty-five thousand in overtime. And so. Um, I'm really worried about that. Um, and so we'll have to be watching that really close because it either. There, there's two options there. It's um, we, we'll need a bigger allocation into our overtime or it's cutting service. Um, so those are basically our two options that we'll have to, to watch for, and we'll report back on that as we get through the fiscal year. And get through these tough times and see how that, uh, the quest of dollars and cents.
How does the, how does the overtime work? I mean, obviously you have a minimum service level you want to provide. People have. You know, there are different things that drive people. Some people want time off, some people want overtime. So do you manage it between voluntary versus mandatory? Like when you need to fill a shift, is that, is that what you were referring to when you say that the sergeants are kind of working through that process or?
They're.
How does that work?
Really, what, what I meant there is they're trying, they're being really creative with the schedule because they knew that we were shorthanded. Um, so they're, you know, asking people, I think, if, eh. If there's things we can do without overtime or we can move people around, but when you get to that point, the way that overtime works is by seniority. Um, and so uh, we have a seniority list that they go through and um, it's offered out. And whoever's available, because obviously there's going to be half the teams available that day and half's not, because they, they, you know, one team's working, one's not. And so. Um, that's how that works. We try to, you know. We've had to do mandatory overtime, but very rarely. We hate to do that, uh, like to see people volunteer for that. Um, in our nine-one-one center, you know, we've been down five positions for a long time and our folks in there. Uh, are working their tails off to make, make it work because they do have uh, two per minimum in there. And they uh, are working mandatory twelve hours overtime every week. Um, and they've been doing that for at least two years now, probably. And then we've also hired two contractors. Um, both of them have started their short-term contracts, but um, that's been helpful to get us some relief. And then we've got one person coming back from, from leave and then a new person, uh, we were. That is just about done with training. So we're hoping in January we'll have a little more relief, but we are looking at a third contractor for nine-one-one because um. We've got, we had another employee leave, uh, within the last month. So we've really only got, uh. I think five full-time dispatchers right now and then two疏.
Have you used, have you used contractors before?
No. No, we haven't. It's um. There are some of the regional nine-one-one centers um, have started doing that. Some of the, the nine-one-one centers in our region. Uh, Frontier was one of them. That was the first that I've heard of that, I don't know, started doing that. Uh, Wasco County, I was just talking to them. They're in the same position. Uh, there's a shortage of nine-one-one dispatchers uh, all over. Uh, the nation, and that's why these, that's why these contract companies are, exist now. Because there's such a need for it. So I'm hopeful uh, that we can start to come out of this. It's a slow process. Uh, our nine-one-one dispatcher's training and onboarding isn't a whole lot shorter than the deputy sheriff. They're really, they really near each other. It's so tough, so hyper-technical and there's so much that goes into that position that, uh, it takes a little time.
Do you have to give extra training uh, for local uh, procedures? When you have contractors come in, do they come in for a month or so?
Six-month contracts.
And then they, there is some onboarding now?
Absolutely. Yes, so, you know, different systems, um. Learning uh, roads, learning, um, you know, different procedures and agencies that, how we do things. So absolutely. Thankfully, because they're very tenured folks that have worked, some of them have worked at a lot larger centers too, and um, you know, have. Uh, some really good and translatable experience, um, we're able to get them up, up to speed really quickly and on the. Um, but there's certainly a time for onboarding. So. Um, the other thing I just, you know, wanted to talk about, we, I know the jail in Norfolk comes up a lot. Uh, we talked about the cost of that. Um, so, you know, in Hutter County, that number is under the sheriff's budget, but uh. In nineteen ninety-nine or ninety-eight, I think, is when the agreement happened. The four counties came together under a one-ninety agreement. Uh, to form Norfolk. And so Norfolk is a budget that um. You know, the sheriff has to provide a jail, but that budget, because it's a one-ninety agreement, it's not something that I'm able to manage. It's not something that I put together. Uh, the positive is it doesn't go up and down during the year. Uh, so you know, going into budget season, what that number is going to be, but it, within that number is baked in right now, two facilities. Um, the adult and juvenile facility. And I think just, and this is more just informational. Um, so looking at counties that are real comparable uh, to our size, so counties between twenty-three and twenty-seven thousand. Um, the average cost of just an adult jail is four point four, almost four point five million, just to provide an adult jail. And so. I think there was a lot of forethought uh, back then, the late nineties. I think, again, it's um, you know, proven to be a, a. A good cost reduction and a good um, partnership. Um, we see the cost go up, and I'm not saying the two point one million dollars, which is what we're paying this year. Isn't a lot of money, but um, just kind of economy to scale, it's uh, the average cost is about. Four point four million. I was just talking to the um, Tillamook County Sheriff recently. And Tillamook County has about a ninety-six-bed facility, but they're only staffed and they're only running about thirty. Uh, folks in that jail every day. And they're staffed uh, with three people during the day minimum. And that facility costs four point eight million dollars to run. And so that's really significant. Um, we see corrections costs going up. Obviously, we're trying to, you know, find a way to do this longer, you know, sustainably, but just. I, I, I wanted to kind of discuss that real quick because it is pretty significant what those, what corrections costs are now. I mean, some of those uh, jails, um, even Jefferson County is like over six million, six and a half million. Um, Cork County opened a new jail, they're about six million a year. Um, so having a combined facility. And that regional model, um, it is, has proven to be um, pretty cost-effective and efficient. Uh, one of the things, it's also important, you know, that many of our partner counties in that range. Um, have to contend with are nine-one-one costs. So all of those counties, uh, the six other counties that I looked at. In our population range, they're all paying general fund into nine-one-one. And so. Uh, another really good forethought that um, commissioners and sheriffs before us. Uh, did, did a toxin district here. And um, so as of today, we're not having to put. A bunch of general fund money in to have that nine-one-one service, and it's a robust nine-one-one service. Um, despite our, our staffing challenges, we've been able to ensure the safety of our responders and safety of our folks. And um, that we have good equipment and things like that. So I think, you know, it's a significant thing for folks to, to understand that we don't have to put general fund money into that. And then we're not having to put any general fund money into search and rescue, which is a, a sheriff mandate. Um. Obviously, I'm, I think we're all concerned about the loss of SRS funding. Um, the county relies on that. That's a significant amount of money. And that's our, the bulk of our funding in search and rescue. We haven't seen a payment uh, come through for quite some time. Um, it's part of my work on a national level. I have been in DC and talking uh, with folks. And they say it's a priority, but unfortunately, we're not seeing a lot of movement in, in DC right now in Congress, but. Um, I know we're back there again in uh, late January or early February. We have a lot of meetings already set up. Uh, because so many counties in the Western US rely on that SRS and um. So we've been working with the Western Congressional Caucus and, and then some of the reps from the Western states to make sure that we continue to prioritize. To make sure that we continue to prioritize, prioritize that. Um and funding like US Forest Service funding, which we rely on uh outside of SRS for our contracts and things like that. So. Um. You know, I just also wanted to note that um the sheriff's office, and since I've been sheriff, we are really aggressive. Uh when, when it comes to grants and finding alternative fundings. Uh we started this budget cycle across all funds with a deficit of six-hundred thousand dollars. Uh so that's how many cuts we took um from federal, state and local uh sources. Uh some significant cuts where we lost our um wellness program that was funded by the federal government. At the tune of about two-hundred thousand dollars a year, that provided wellness services uh for the gorge agencies. Actually, I have a meeting in Sherman County tomorrow afternoon with fourteen agencies to try to find a way to continue providing those services. Um super important that we address trauma uh in the work that our folks are doing. Um from nine-one-one um through uh parole probation, all of our, our divisions, the jail, um there's a lot of trauma. Uh so we have two uh mental health providers that we have contracted with. We do um what's called yoga for first responders, which is a national evidence-based program. And then it's support, uh a regional peer support team. And so um we, I'm hopeful um that we can find a path forward there, because we don't want to lose those services. Uh thankfully, we've been really fiscally responsible with that money. And we're able to get an extension from the federal government to extend that into calendar year twenty-twenty-six. But I anticipate we're going to deplete that money in the first quarter or so of twenty-twenty-six, so.
Was the two-hundred thousand for Hutter County or for all three counties?
It was for the agencies that participated. And at the time, I think it was twelve agencies. And then we're looking to, or maybe it's eleven and we're adding four more.
It's across the three counties or four counties?
Yeah, in fact, uh and Quick Tech County uh Sheriff's Office.
Okay.
Yes. But that program's managed to run through the Hutter County Sheriff's Office. Um so we, those types of things, we, we're always looking out for opportunities. So we, we're really aggressive with that. We bring in a ton of money, as you've probably seen through emergency management. Um and that's not just for traditional public safety. Um it's for benefiting our partners, benefiting uh a lot of work right now on wildfire mitigation. Um I, it's, it's a thing. It's an issue. And, and Charles has done an imagine, or, or, excuse me, done an amazing job of um. Finding resources to, to bring those into the community. And so we're helping um. We're helping neighborhoods. We're doing fire-wise support and stuff that. So I think that's really important to know. Uh in our parole probation division, as you probably know, um our commander Jamie Hepner, for I think three, at least three budget cycles now. Has been able to secure money uh from the state of Oregon to help open our homeless shelter. Uh you, you wouldn't really think that a public safety agency is going to be one of the primary supporters of, of a shelter like that. But again, we're able to support those types of um community initiatives uh through our aggressive uh grant opportunities. So um and then just, you know, as far as um, you know, my job as sheriff. Uh since I have been sheriff, I'm just finishing my thirteenth year. Um I have made sure that I am really active in the state, um locally in the state and the region. Um and now nationally, just so that Hutter County has a voice and that we are uh taking advantage of every opportunity that we have. Um and. So, you know, I think, I, at the beginning of the year, I think I was on twenty-three boards and committees. And I've got that down to about seventeen, but the majority of what I participate in are, there's a fiscal impact. Um and it's having that voice. Uh you know, I've been able to move up and have an impact. Kind of more in the Western United States um through Western State Sheriffs. Where we just added Iowa last week, and so we have nineteen states that we represent. Um I chair that committee, um or chair a committee with Western States uh Government Affairs and Public Plans. And we're doing a lot of advocacy for counties. And um so I'm able to advocate for Hutter County and um ensure that we have a voice in getting funding. And I have aggressively done that for thirteen years and continue to do that with, all with the flavor of reducing the impact on our local taxpayers. Um because I know the position we're in. I've been here, starting my twenty-ninth year in February. And so I've been here a long time and I've seen the ups and downs and I've gone through the recession and I've taken furlough days. And taken pay cuts and taken pay freezes. And so I, I've seen a lot. And I just, you know, am really uh sensitive uh about the position that we're in. And so I make sure that I have a seat at the table and that I can advocate for Hutter County.
What's an example of some of the things that, that the Western states and those other? Uh what, what are some of the concrete examples of what they've been able to accomplish in the last couple of years?
Yeah. So one of the things that we continue to work on are funding coming from um the Bureau of Land Management. Um and uh US Forest Service. And so having that open dialogue, what, it was some of the things we've accomplished are around rule-making, uh rules that impact. Um our counties, uh there was some BLM rule-making that we were able to get changed through um. Through uh our advocacy with them. And it had to do with, that one in particular had to do with closures and closing public plans of closing access. Uh more recently, I kind of was, have been leading the charge on this OSHA rule. But I think I talked to um the commission about at one point. But OSHA had uh proposed a rule at the end of last year, beginning of twenty-twenty-five, called the Emergency Response Standard. Um that, that rule would effectively change how search and rescue is performed in the entire nation. Right now, that's not federally regulated. Federal government doesn't have jurisdiction over search and rescue. Um and essentially it would put us under uh fire rules that they're trying to change. Uh and would cost us somewhere in the neighborhood of at least forty thousand dollars a year for, just for compliance. Um and the compliance standards for that are about six-hundred-and-forty hours a year of one person's time, just to ensure compliance. Um some of these smaller agencies and, and folks like us with not very big budgets, um it's going to decimate them. That forty thousand dollars doesn't matter how large or small you are. That's the cost of compliance. And so that's one of the things that I am the lead on. And so I've testified at Department of Labor. Uh we've been advocating that in DC, we're talking with labor right now, um working through local Oregon OSHA. That um Oregon Special Districts Association, super engaged, LLC is really engaged. Um been working with them, with Oregon State Fire Marshal. And so because it has an impact to our um, to our volunteer firearms, because they have to comply with it too. Um and there's no money associated with it. And so we're hoping that we can effectively kill that rule. Um there's another rule that we've been working on through the US Forest Service um called the Criminal Prohibitions Rule. And um that effectively changes uh some of the focus of what the US Forest Service law enforcement does. And really puts it into the territory of what counties are supposed to do. And so we've been pushing back uh pretty hard on the Forest Service and Department of Ag. Um we've had a couple of bills introduced in Congress actually to kill that rule. Um because uh it's the work that we're doing and they should be essentially compensating us for the work that we're doing on national forests. And we have a county like ours that's seventy-five percent uh public lands and sixty-eight percent of that is um by the federal government. Um we have a significant impact. Uh our workload is significant. Our search and rescue impact is significant. Our calls for service, um Mount Hood Meadows is in that area. And so there's significant impact on us and we need to be properly compensated and make sure that they um remember that.
And what was the bill going to do? It was going to say that the Forest Service would do those things?
No, it just kind of changes um, I guess, their focus and away from resource management, which is what US Forest Service law enforcement is. Designed to do is, is per, resource protection, right? Uh because that's what they do is they, they grow renewable resources. And, and so their law enforcement is supposed to protect those. And then they've started to kind of branch out. Um and start to get into um what local law enforcement does. And so um there are several different areas that we have concern about. And um I've got a great relationship uh with the chief of law enforcement for the US Forest Service. And um we've had many robust discussions and just met last week, in fact, uh to kind of go through this. And um and at the same time, we're talking about increasing these cooperative law enforcement agreements that I brought up before. Uh it's been over twenty years since we've seen an increase in those cooperative law enforcement agreements. The Forest Service said that they are a hundred percent behind us, um if we can get something through Congress um to increase those. Because it's a win-win, those relationships. We have great relationships with the US Forest Service. They're a, a necessary partner, particularly in, in our county. Um and so they want to see those increased nationwide, it's five million dollars. Our, our contract with the US Forest Service is twenty-two thousand dollars a year. We have two-hundred-sixty-eight thousand acres of US Forest Service ground. You know, you've seen the visitor numbers um in the gorge and in the Mount Hood. We have a significant impact.
So what is that fund supposed to cover, the twenty-two thousand? If you read the law, what is that supposed to cover?
Yeah. So the agreement is, um the baseline agreement is that we cover from Memorial Day to Labor Day. Um thirty hours a week, that's the ideal during a weekend. Um and we're patrolling areas and US Forest Service um campgrounds, you know, high-use areas, high-visibility areas. Uh the reality is you can't cover thirty hours a week, um even with a, you know, lowest-paid deputy. We have a, you know, we have somebody in that position. We've been fortunate again because of the relationships that we've built with them, that during COVID, during some other um influxes of money in the, in their budget. They've been able to give some of that to us. And we're operating on a budget of about sixty thousand dollars this year.
Right.
But, you know, in reality, in twenty-twenty-five, we need to be looking at more like six figures um in our county. Because of the impacts and, and the work that we do.
So they have their own law enforcement and I've seen their law enforcement out there ticketing people on their roads and uh, you know. Stopping people from doing whatever. Uh and is that not, is that something that they think that you're supposed to be doing? Or what's, what, what am I seeing?
Yeah. So, well, that's one of the bones of contention, is traffic enforcement, uh because that's not in their, necessarily in their wheelhouse.
Right.
Uh there's ways to do that, like sheriffs can swear them in uh as, as deputies essentially. And I've done that uh over my career. I've sworn a couple of the L E Os, uh the law enforcement officers, US Forest Service. And because it is a force multiplier, right? It helps it um if we can work together. But that's what we're encouraging is you need to have those relationships and not being, not going in. Thankfully, here, we haven't seen some of the issues like we've seen in other areas or in other states. But like in the state of Utah, there's been a lot of contention, because you get some new law enforcement officer in the Forest Service. And they go in and they think they're going to be heavy-handed. And then you hear about it as the sheriff, right? That your constituents are being, you know, targeted or whatever for some offense that really is in the sheriff's purview.
Running a stop sign in the middle of no place.
Right. You know, whatever it is. And, and they, believe me, they're phenomenal uh partners. Um it's just, there are some nuanced issues that we're having. And, and as part of that, it's this longer discussion about, listen, we need to be. These cooperative law enforcement agreements need to be a lot more meaningful. BLM has done a great job. There are several sheriffs in the state of Oregon that have one or more full-time positions funded. Um by Bureau of Land Management. Uh the Forest Service funding is just a little bit different and just.
And we have no BLM lands, right?
We have about a hundred fifty-five acres, I think.
So they're trying, they want to do the kind of law enforcement that they're leaking into. And you would prefer that local law enforcement in sheriff's departments got paid more to do those things?
Yeah, we're already, you know, the, the reality is we're already feeling it. So and. The US Forest Service Law Enforcement Division nationwide isn't very big anyway. And so here in this area, we have about three law enforcement officers and they work in different areas. So we have a couple, the Mount Hoods areas split into two. It's not all, um at, at least in our area, there's uh out of the Parkdale District, there's a couple, there's Barlow Side. And then there's Parkdale area and, but they also go into Wasco and Clackens Counties. And then we've got a gorge uh car as well, but that person will run the whole. Clender Gorge National Scenic Area, which is obviously multiple counties, multiple Skimminia, or Wasco, Quick Tech. And so um then they're, they're federal law enforcement. And so they're, excuse me, is it some sort of incident or Rainbow Fest every year is a great example. Uh that moves around the West. Um they pull all of their law enforcement officers essentially to go cover that. Because it's a huge event with a hundred thousand people. Um usually uh creates quite the havoc in the community that it's being hosted in. And so then we're left with nobody, right? And so then that, that response is a hundred percent. So they'll have one person here. Um we're seeing them moved around nationally for different events. It's really common to be down, uh you know, two of your three. Uh and again, they communicate really well and work really closely together. But what I've told, what I've told the director of law enforcement is like, listen, you know, you know, the reality is, is you're pouring your folks all of the time. And we're stuck holding the bag. And it's usually during the busiest times of year. Uh it's usually during the summer when we have a ton of search and rescues and things like that. Um search and rescue still all falls on me. That's, doesn't matter who owns the land. Um but when we're seeing that high usage, high call volumes, um when, you know, middle of winter, middle of summer, same spheres. Or we're seeing recreations, um they're just not present.
The twenty-two thousand dollar number for that contract, what should that be?
I think it should be at least a hundred.
Is that for the point five funded by?
Mm-hmm. And that's because we have the sixty-some thousand, sixty-six thousand. Yeah.
Was that number sixty-six?
Sixty-six thousand is what we're operating on right now, because.
Dollars, okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Because we've been able to, with our relationships, you know, get some additional funding and then protect that funding.
But wasn't a lot of that congressionally-directed spending that Blumenauer got, no?
No, it was uh, it was within the law enforcement budget. Some of it, we, we got a pretty good influx during COVID. Um that some of those COVID dollars came over. But then uh last year, when we had a fire on uh the West Side. Um we were, they were able to move our deputies onto uh that fire and actually pay them out of the, the fire.
Right.
Versus our budget. And so we were able to get reimbursed for that time that the deputies worked and not hit that budget. And they'll get reimbursed. And, and so they've been able to give us a few influxes of dollars where we've been able to take that. And again, you know, they're good partners, but it's just not something you can rely on. Like, I don't, uh there's no guarantee we're going to get sixty thousand dollars next year.
Well, that's why I was wondering about the source, because I, I know there was a fair amount of CDS uh money also that had come into the forest. It was being used and we know that's not coming back.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. So they had some other, um they had some other revenue sources within the Forests Law Enforcement Division specifically that they're able to give us. We've also worked really closely with the forests themselves, so with the Mount Hood and with the scenic area. Where they've been able to give us some money over the years um as well. Because of, we, we've got a pretty robust group that um is looking at Highway thirty-five impacts. We've been together for several years. It's Forest Service, so that law enforcement, um ski areas that all participate. Because of uh some of the issues we've seen in the winter and so coordinating resources. And then, you know, by providing us with some funding, then we're able to provide some service.
What's that coordination look like? How you meet, how regularly?
Yeah, I think it's monthly. Um it's a little slower during some seasons. Uh because, you know, but right now we're meeting um regularly and just kind of discussing issues. Um planning responses uh because there's been times when Highway thirty-five, like south, just south of Mountain Meadows. Is completely stacked up or there'll be crashes. Um White River Snow Parks get overflowing into the highway. Then people start parking on the highway, which isn't okay. And so then you've got one person out there trying to, you know, direct chaos. And so um coordinating resources, talking about if there's events coming up, uh finding funding. Um and making sure that we have uh appropriate measured response. Um, and making sure that we have uh, appropriate measured response in those areas.
Has there been a similar effect from Mitchell Point Tunnel opening?
Not yet. Uh, I know we've received some complaints from residents uh, about parking, um, but as far as a consistent. Uh, issue, not yet, we haven't seen it. All right, well, I don't want to go over time because we just.
Well, I think I think we've asked our question. Did you have more that you wanted to share with us?
No, I just wanted to, just a couple of things in closing. I um, just wanted to to. Again, you know. Offer the fact that I'm here also anytime you have questions, if you have questions from constituents. Um, if you want to have a discussion about a certain thing, I'm happy to come talk. Um, I, you know, really. Uh, appreciate the opportunity to provide clarity and provide insight about, you know, what I'm. What my job is and what I'm elected to do, and so. Um, again, you know, I appreciate the relationships that that uh. I'm able to have right now. I think we're working through things, but I just wanted to throw that out there and offer it up that feel free to call me, text me, email me. Um, you know, I'm available uh, to talk and really want to be a partner. And I just wanted to um, thank our team at the Sheriff's Office and um. You know, we've seen it, we're seeing it in dispatch, we've seen it multiple times in. Our enforcement division and in parole probation across the board, we just, you know, we're always. Dealing with significant challenges to make sure that. We provide the services uh, to the county that they expect, and so I just wanted to recognize the sacrifices of our folks um. At the expense of their families and um, of their personal life oftentimes and. Their commitment or continuing commitment to each other and the community uh. To deliver those services despite. Constant operational challenges, so appreciate the time and. Um, you know, look forward to coming back in the near future.
Do you have any more questions?
No, I was just gonna thank you Sheriff too. You've been super accessible when I call or text and I appreciate you just. Being available and accessible at all hours of the day.
Uh, I have a question, just to get a little more summary. Uh, one of the questions I had uh, forwarded to you was concerning with things that you you and your department do to create efficiencies. And what I heard and just I want to know if you want to add anything to the list, what I heard is you talked about all the grant efforts that you go through, you talked about. Uh, the work that you do with the feds uh. Federal law enforcement to uh. To bring some some funding and you also talked about uh, the ability to lateral hires which effectively. Wind up being a budgetary plus or budgetary improvement. Uh, is there anything else I should have on that list?
Well, yeah, I talked about the scheduling we're doing, uh, trying to offset overtime and um, you know, do a lot of the in-house. Uh, a lot of our training in-house. Um, you know, I think the other thing that's important to remember is um. We we work a hundred and sixty-eight hour work week. Um, so versus, you know, most departments are forty. And so costs are in a looked at rents four point two times the hours per week um, that other departments work and so. Um. You know, there's a lot of uh, we're always trying to create efficiencies with staffing. Um, we've combined things. I didn't mention it, but when I do a budget every year, just so you understand how I do budget, I do zero-based budgeting. So we start from zero and we build up and I do a lot of analysis. Um, the personnel number I get from the county, we plug that in, but then. Everything through materials and services through our revenues, I'm looking at projections and doing it, you know, analysis of. Trends, um, what we have coming up, but we're budgeting what we need. Um, and. And that's it, and sometimes it's at the expense of. Um, you know, personal protective equipment or things that we need to do, we have to push them off budget cycles because we can't afford them. Uh, in forty-eight oh one, our general fund budget, we, I think I came in at two point seven percent um, below and that scares me. Um, I'm generally, you know, I like to see more carryover, but again, I don't, I don't. Had my budget and I don't, um, so we don't, I think there in and of itself is an efficiency because. There's not a ton of carryover and there's not a ton of fat. Um, we've got to be able to work through contingencies because we're going to have unexpected things happen. Um, but there's not a lot to do that and generally the way we do that is at the expense of something else.
And also, you you're participating in organizational assessment.
Absolutely.
And so um, you know, do you have any guesses? Uh, are you excited about that or?
Yeah, I, you know, I think it's um, I'm interested to see, I'm really excited about. Big Tilly uh, because they have such breadth of national experience. Uh, they're well-respected. I'm glad that we were able to do that. Um. And absolutely, I'm at the table, so I, you know, wanted to participate in that from day one and I participated in the past in those things with the county and.
Look forward to seeing what comes out of that.
Commissioner, you have any questions?
No.
Ask him all the questions that you have over the last interim number of hours.
Yeah, we we uh, we interact quite a lot and um. Sheriff English is always responsive to phone calls and texts and. And not once has he said, you again, so I do appreciate that. Still answering.
Okay, I'll stop saying that.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you for that, Jenny.
And thank you all for coming. It's kind of fun to have an audience for a change. Usually we don't have much of an audience. All right, we are going to take a break now.
Yeah. Right, we will call order the business meeting for the Hood River County Board of Commissioners on Monday, November seventeen at. Six oh eight. Are there any additions or deletions?
There we go. And I think that it probably needs to be closer to the person who doesn't speak as well, but. Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
So Chair, you or I would note the three consent items that came. For the supplemental agenda item, so they would be items L, M, and N. Um, so there's a grant agreement, an email fold confirmation, and then uh, we had a timber sale award.
So we will add the consent agenda, that the consent agenda, do we make motion for that? Okay. I will. Entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda into the agenda.
You mean the, so I I will move that we accept the additions proposed into the consent agenda.
Thank you.
For future consideration.
I'll second that.
That's what we're doing.
You're right, I put the consent word in the wrong place, all right?
A second.
Okay. Commissioner Weathers.
Yes.
Commissioner Babbitt.
Yes.
Commissioner Ready. Yes, Sheriff votes, yes. All right, we got that into the consent agenda. Um. Are there any conflicts or potential conflicts of interest? No, hearing none. We will move on then to our first. Uh, we have a public hearing on the garbage rate increase. This is the time scheduled for a public hearing regarding the garbage rate increase request. The following are the rules of order for this hearing. No person shall speak without first being recognized by the chair and then coming forward and stating his or her full name and residence address for the record. The chair, members of the commission, and with approval of the chair, county council, and any other officer or employee of the county. May question any person who submits an oral argument. The chair may set time limitations for this proceeding. If that is done, proponents and opponents will have equal time to present arguments. If we need time limits, they'll be three minutes. I don't think we will. Staff or agency representatives will provide background information relating to the request of the commission. Public testimony will be taken. Once that is complete, the hearing will be closed and the commission will deliberate. So now we will open the public hearing and ask for the agency representative, uh. Jim Winterbottom with Waste Connections, doing business as Hood River Garbage, to speak. Welcome, Mr. Winterbottom.
Good evening, Chair, Member of the Commission. Thanks for the time tonight on the agenda. There we go. Uh, I am Jim Winterbottom of the River Garbage. I'm here before you tonight as I traditionally annually am. Uh, with proposed rate increases. Uh, nobody likes rate increases. We receive them on a regular basis and we feel the same that everybody else says. Um, the C P I that we're using was based off the July first, twenty twenty-four date. Of three point zero four, excuse me, July first, twenty twenty-five date of three point zero four percent. We try to operate a little bit leaner than that and traditionally ask for eighty-five percent of that C P I, which this year. Is two point five eight percent. The Wasco County landfill has already obtained approval, raised their fifth fee. By that same two point five eight percent starting January first, twenty twenty-six. On the rate sheet. There's a bar that's highlighted in green, which is our residential rate for a U G A customer with a thirty-two gallon can. Currently, they are paying twenty-five dollars and twenty-nine cents per month. The two point five eight percent increase would be sixty-five cents per month. Or fifteen cents per pickup. Moving out into the rural area. That same customer is currently paying twenty-four dollars and thirty-four cents a month for a thirty-two gallon can. They would see an increase of sixty-three cents per month. Or fifteen percent increase per pickup. We look at a. Customer that has a dumpster, if you will, yard and a half container near location. Currently, for once a week service, they're paying a hundred and fifty-nine dollars and eight cents. The increase would be four dollars and eleven cents per month. Or ninety-five cents per pickup. And if there are any questions or any more details that Commissioner would like to hear, I'm more than willing to do my best.
Do we have any questions?
Right, one really simple one. Um, I guess I never noticed before that the rural, the rural can. Is slightly less than an urban can. I would have guessed it to be the opposite. Is that just an accident of history or is there some?
So U G A customers get weekly recycling in most cases.
Okay.
And the rural gets every other week or not at all, depending on where they're located.
Thanks.
Are there any other questions?
Is there any?
You had mentioned that the increase would help. Cover healthcare costs was on there. Does it really?
Well, eighty-five percent of the C P I doesn't leave much. Um. So no, it doesn't. I mean, I believe our customer, employee pay went up fifteen percent. Um, starting July first. So we've got to be very creative in how we do things, whether it's truck idle time, GPS mapping. Um, we are being as creative as we can to uh, operate with less.
I know you all do a great service, at least for for me, and so the two point five eight seems really low for an increase, just wanted to mention.
Yeah.
Is there any public testimony? Anything else? Then we will close the public hearing and start deliberations. And.
I guess I'll just say the eighty-five percent of C P I seems like that's been the. The model for quite some time and it seems like a. A supportable and rational model.
Okay, well. Is there a motion to approve the garbage rate increase as requested effective January first, twenty twenty-six?
I would make that motion.
I'll second the motion. Moved and seconded that we approve the garbage rate increase as requested. Commissioner Ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Babbitt?
Yes.
Commissioner Weathers?
Yes.
Sheriff votes, yes. Thank you very much.
And it's, and thank you for spending two hours listening to us babble about the presentation.
There's been no babbling.
Yeah.
Listening to me now.
And then one thing I'll bring up and I'll keep with the Minister Williams about this. The penny shortage. Not sure how much has been heard about this. But at a transfer station, we do a number of cash transactions on a daily basis and we can no longer get pennies from our local bank. Um, so as I work into January first of the rates going up at the transfer station because it's housed in the River County. I may be looking for permission to round the price board either up or down depending on. You know, if it's one or two, seven or eight, so, okay. I just want to throw that out there.
We will be prepared.
So, so I don't know what pennies are worth to you, but I have an old, like, five-gallon glass mail jug.
It's amazing how many people have pennies when you don't, when you, you know, when you don't meet them, you can't find them, and now you need them, everyone's got them, so. All right, keep that in mind. Thanks very much.
Maybe they'll be worth more than a penny.
Yeah, yeah.
I think they already are.
They already are. They'll double.
It costs four cents.
They cost four cents to make it. Yeah. But we make it up in volume, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So, um, is there any public comment? Dale Hill, come and give us your public comment. You have three minutes. Is there anyone else, by the way, so? Pardon?
There's no one else.
Okay.
I'm like, you're gonna kick Dale out of the way to get somebody else.
No, I just, I just didn't want to forget after. Thank you for coming. State your name and your address, please.
Yes, my name is Dale Hill. I live at five two zero zero Woodbridge Drive, uh, Mountain Park, tails in the upper valley. Um. I'm coming because of something that I've happened to come across in the last two to three weeks. I do a lot of walking around in the county forest lands and other parts, other forest lands, US Forest Service and and whatnot in the county. And I have certain places I go on a fairly regular basis, um, maybe every. Week and a half or two weeks, I'll go back to the same place and do the same ride. I take my dog and go walking. Three weeks ago, I went up from the county yard, which is right at the junction of uh, two eighty. One, I think the D highway where the bridge crosses over the east fork. And there's a county yard there, I go through the county yard. There's a kind of an area where they do a lot of dumping and then there's another area further back where they store older materials, culverts and various. Things, and then it continues on paralleling the east fork, and then it gets to a point where it starts to go up the hill. Basically uphill onto Ghulie. Um, right at that point, there's a gate and it's a gate to a private landowner. And I've never seen that gate open before. And I go up that road and I just take the dog and it's good exercise for me as well with my dog. Yesterday, I went there. Again, after two or three weeks ago, I went there, everything was the same as before. Yesterday, I went there. There was major significant damage to that road. Which is in a restricted area where nobody's supposed to be driving. The county has it closed off at the county yard and up at the top where it connects up with the other Ghulie road systems. Um. And it it was. Ruts in the in the road surface that were maybe this wide. And ranging from two to three inches deep up to a foot deep at the deepest. It was extensive. There were places where it was. Twenty, thirty feet long, other places where it was fifty, sixty yards long, not always that deep, but there was significant damage. Significant impact. It was atrocious. It looked like it was from a pickup truck. I don't know that it was. I did not witness the activity happening that caused the damage. But it was significant. It seemed to me that it originated at that gate where the private property was. Where I've always seen it closed and yesterday it was open. And there was all this damage and it seemed to originate coming out of there. It went around a relatively sharp curve and goes, went up the hill. I followed it all the way up to the top where there's some clear cuts. That were a few years old, not very much, new trees maybe this high. I took lots of pictures. I took one short little video clip. That was one incident that I witnessed, or I didn't witness it happening, but I certainly observed.
We're three and a half, but.
I observed it. There was another case. Just about a week earlier where I was walking from Hillcrest Road, which is on the east side of. Ghulie, and I witnessed a side-by-side coming up. The hill. Through the forest, not on any trail, not on any road, just through the forest. And it got up onto the road that goes up to where that cell tower is. It turned and it came towards me. I was wondering what's with this coming on this road, because it's also in a restricted area. And I didn't stop them, I didn't talk to them, they didn't race by me and cause any problem, they slowed down and. But. About fifty feet past where they had come up out of the woods. But about fifty feet past where they had come up out of the woods. Blazing their own trail. There was another place where they came up through the woods, somebody else had in the past. And there was a sign that said trail closed. So I'm pretty sure that the, the trail that they were making was not supposed to be there either. My concern is that these kinds of things need to be brought to your attention. I came in and I talked to Ms. Williams and I talked to Doug Thieses today. And explained it to them. I've shared with them some photographs. I took a lot. I gave them just a few. I think there needs to be an. An attempt to try and contact the people who are involved in this now. The people who came up in the four by four, I don't know how you would ever find them. I don't know who they were. The others, the landowner is known. There are, you're sure that you can find out who that landowner is by looking at tax records. They need to be approached and talked to us about this so that they are on notice that the county knows. What's happening and that they need to be apprised of what should be and should not be allowed.
Dale, thank you for coming and telling us that. We really appreciate you. Sharing your observations with what's going on out in the forest and places that we weren't walking this week. So, thank you.
That's most, that's what I really wanted to do, just make you folks aware of it. And Ms. Williams and Doug both were very gracious to share some time with you about it too. Thank you.
Well, thank you again. Thank you. And now we will go on to our reports and we'll start with our administrator.
Good evening. Uh, so my administrator's report will be fairly greedy. Uh, I, in the packet, uh, is a list of items. Um, that were fairly routine this month, conflict negotiations, follow-up in the last meetings. Um, a number of us will be out at the AOC conference, uh, this week. Um, we did have the opportunity to, uh, meet with our legislators, which you may elaborate on, but. Uh, we did provide a legislative, uh, priorities list. Um, it was, uh. Um, prepared quickly for them and will want to review that and, uh, evaluate that with the AOC. Uh, input, uh, and finalize that on our December agenda. Um, but it was so to meet, uh, with, um, our new senator and representative. Uh, to get things going. We have much to talk about in this upcoming legislative session. Um, I just also did want to note that October was Cyber Security Awareness Month and so, um. We had a lunch and learn what I, which I've implemented at the county to get our county employees. Um, trained on and familiar with the various parts of our county. Um, Tony Clark and our new Technology Services Director Josh Webb, uh, did a great job. I called it Tony's fireside talk. Uh, but it coincided with, uh, Cyber Security Awareness Month and, uh, just to note that we'll need to. Schedule the subcommittee of the board, the Cyber Security, uh, Review Board, uh, in December. Um, there have been some great emergency management trainings, uh, that Charles was. Charles Young was instrumental in bringing. And so a number of us, uh. Attended that and there was an exercise at the high school this morning. So we're also. Trying out, uh, and perfecting our Everbridge system. Um, and I did want to note, uh, we have Karen Pike in the audience tonight. So some of you have been our new HR director. Um, she is here observing, uh, and, uh, she's been a great addition to our Hood River County team. Uh, very quickly, I just wanted to address also in your packet. Um, I had OCU Extension do a quarterly report for us. Um, they are used to doing. Uh, annual reports typically at budget time in counties. Uh, so in your packet, you have an extensive quarterly report that goes over the various. Programs that they provide for the county. Um, so if, uh, you are interested in having any particular programs back for work sessions. I would look forward to, uh, hearing about that. I know we, uh, staff have a couple we want to bring back. To make sure that we're coordinating with OSU Extension. And I think those are the major things for my report this evening.
Thank you. So there's not an actual presentation from over to us. It's just the written report. Okay. Very good. Well, then we'll do our commissioner reports and any, we'll start the.
Yeah, actually mine's short. I don't have anything new to report for the last month. We've been at all the meetings together, yeah.
Commissioner, I bet you had some meetings.
I, I did, but, um, enough, very little is worth reporting on, but I have this dot, dot, dot waiting because I just requested a question. Uh, we, I was told over the weekend that it was, uh, that we were expecting. To get a record decision on the bridge, which is the, the culmination of the. The environmental process, the environmental back statement process. And I was waiting for it to come through and my talking slowly allowed us to come through. So I have an answer here. Uh, we have two out of the three signatures.
We have two items for signatures.
No, two of the three signatures required, uh, federal highways is, is. They're saying now they're going to sign it tomorrow because they didn't understand how to do an electronic signature.
Okay.
And I'm just reading what my text says here. Uh, so, um, but that's. Two and a half years. Three and a half years. I forget how many years it's been to get to that point. Uh, which is great because you can't go forward with any, um, instruction without a record decision, so.
Very good.
It's an important step, but it doesn't provide us with funding. I'll leave it at that.
But a necessary step nonetheless.
A necessary step, um, something which, um. We thought was nine months.
Very good. Commissioner, have you, we, report?
I do have a quick report, uh, Mount Hood Economic Alliance. We did not meet this month as there was no. Um, activity to discuss, um. Norcore, we continue to meet weekly, uh, our cross-functional team. Um, we are close to wrapping, um, wrapping up our work. Um, and the expectation is that we will make a recommend, excuse me, we will report findings. And I was very clear about that and almost used the word recommendation. We'll report findings to the Norcore Board. Um, on December the eighteenth, which is our next scheduled meeting. Um, this month was ca- canceled as there's AOC, um. So that, that lies just a few days after, um, after our regular monthly meeting. So. We may want to consider, and I talked to Allison about this and Chair, you were about maybe, uh, having a work session sometime after. So we can start discussing what that assessment report looked like. And what our findings are with, uh, again, um, with the goal of long-term financial sustainability. Um, I think the sooner we get it out in the public and, um, surely. Uh, all four counties have worked well together, at least on my, my time on the board, but. Um, there may not be consensus on how we move forward. Um, and I think that's where the public process needs to start. Uh, understanding, um, really what the priorities are for each individual county and then trying to find a way. Um, to move forward as a group, um. Um, of which, of course, we have, um, quite a voice in, so. Um, so I look forward to, to, um, reporting back and, and, um. Um, see how that goes forward. So. More to, more to come on that, but again, uh, otherwise we'd spend another month and maybe some of that. You know, public conversation would be happening. You know, for quite a while before we had met. So, uh, something certainly to consider. Um, met last week with, uh, Allison, we, um. Decided to meet at least monthly just to kind of chat, have coffee, uh, in a couple of months, mostly because I. I'm busy and I've canceled a number of times, so it was nice to sit down for an hour or so. Um, I also wanted to share and I shared with Allison, um, I'm also on the West Side Rural Fire Board and, uh. Uh, Chief Kelly was very complimentary of the, um, consultant that we hired for the new CAD im- implementation. And very complimentary of our, uh, of our administrator. So I was happy to share that personally and happy to share that publicly, so.
Very good.
And none of my, none of my, uh, work involved food.
Yeah, but Chad's not here.
Then I per- I did purchase some.
And Chad, Chad's not here to hear that.
Okay, well, uh, he will certainly, he will certainly wash the table. I'm certain of that.
Well, thank you. Well, I hear lots of nice things about our administrator on a regular basis. I should, we should have that. I don't usually add it to my report, but. Happens a lot. Um. Well, gosh, you guys didn't go to meetings and often you all go to meetings and I go to fewer, so.
Went to meetings just in the written report.
That's true. Um, so this last month, nobody else mentioned it, but, um. Oh, let's see. Oh, we did talk about the precinct meeting where we appointed, um. Senator Drazen. We had an open house at Forestry and nobody's, we haven't really talked about that yet. I don't think we've reported on it. Because, so I was taking notes and, uh, there were seventeen comments made. Which seemed like a pretty robust number of people showing up and pretty much everybody said. That they really appreciated working with Doug and TJ and, um. And I mean, just pretty much everybody, the forestry people, there were people there from the forestry department and there were people there. From the wrecked trails and the wrecked trails, of course, will be, uh.
TJ didn't get to hear that. He just came in.
Yeah.
And the, they said, I'm going to run it back. So at the, at the, at the forestry meeting. There were so many compliments for TJ and for Doug and how much everybody appreciates working with you guys. So, um, really honestly, that was one of the main things everybody said. And there were a lot of people there from wrecked trails. Um, they'll have a chance to talk about that again when we get to that point in the, um. In the process. Um.
We'll say, if I could just interject, it was really nice that there were, um, it wasn't just, it wasn't just a group from wrecked trails, but people who were. Um, concerned not only for the health of the, uh, health of the forest, but also, um. The forest as an economic, um, driver for, um, for the county. So it was nice to have. You know, different viewpoints as opposed to a singular view.
There was, yeah, there was someone from the Forestry Commission, from the Forestry Committee. And said pretty much exactly that. He said, our current policy serves us while balancing fiscal responsibility and. Other uses. There was some talk of the illegal bootleg trails, enforcement, possible fines. There's a lot of concern about fire danger and Andrew's face not here anymore, but, um. Clearly, um, and he's, this is something he's working on, but I think Doug was the one that was talking about it. Um, especially from adjoining lands. So that's something we have to have in the back of our minds. Andrew Meyer from ODFNW, he spoke about how their policy, because. The areas with trails have gotten so far beyond any recommendation for what's good for wildlife that we perhaps. Um, that, that OD and F and W has a slightly different concept now, which is to set aside some other places that haven't yet been. Um. Haven't, haven't yet been cut into trails and maybe that's something we can talk about moving forward. Um. And I guess, oh, and somebody did bring up risk management and I'm hoping at some point we can talk about. Uh, the recreational immunity and risk management and how that, how that works for the county. What position then? Um, I met with, later on the sixth, I met with Allison and Leslie Tamura and Ashley from. Um, McCarrick, she's our, um, county agent, um. And we talked about the abandoned orchards, which we've spoken of before, but this had. Uh, the added angle that Brian Beebe is looking at EFU lands that are no longer being used as EFU. Yeah, in. We're in reference to their ta- uh, their deferral, tax deferral status. And maybe there's some places there where those two groups can get together and, uh, solve some. Problems they have in common. Um, went to the McKed Symposium, DJ F Arthurman.
I did.
Yep, and they had a panel on.
I was the only one who asked questions.
Pardon?
I was the only one who asked questions.
That's true. Hey, Allison. Uh, to the Nise Memorial, uh, presentation and dedication. And it was really moving. There's been a lot of these presentations that I've been to and in this case, they had, I think, five or six. Um, people that are in the next generation. And so the Nise that buy, you know, the people they were talking about that served in World War Two with their grand. And it was really touching and, and. You know, made me realize that I took for granted that there were all these guys in the, in the community that I grew up with. Especially farming and to hear their granddaughters talk about them was, was pretty neat. Um. Let's see. I think that's all.
So on one of those issues, you talked about Andrew Spake and his, uh, interest in helping us capture some. Funding for specific services related to fire risk reduction. And so it's my understanding that, uh, Allison is working with Doug on that. Is that? Is that reasonable? You, you, there's some follow-up that's happening on that, right? And do we have to ask for that?
Uh, so I think there will be follow-up, yes. Uh, and so Doug TC is on the all-ins partnership representing, uh, the county. Um, there is conversation about how do we generate, uh, more revenues for, uh. Higher mitigation suppression support. Um, and so, uh. There are conversations occurring and I think for this commission, um. My thought is, is that as we're getting through our sustainability work and looking at all of the things. And that's part of our discussion tonight too, is all of the things that need to come forward that we need to fund. I think, uh. Uh, wildfire, uh, work is a piece of it, um, and they have some support they can provide. Uh, through the Trust for Public Lands, whom I've worked with before and they do an amazing job. Uh, in the work that they do on testing issues or voter support, um. However, there's much for this commission to think through and weighing all of the things that we need to look at for future laws.
One thing I will add and, um, Commissioner Babbitts, you know this, but the twenty-four bed seasonal winter warming shelter opened up in Hood River today.
Thank you, seventeenth, yes.
Yes, today through March.
I should have reported.
Oh, yeah, March twenty twenty six. On Oak Street.
Thank you. Yeah, good news.
And just a reminder that the pass-through funds to assist with that effort come through the work of our parole, uh, Jamie Hapner and the parole and. Station Department as well.
Important.
Efforts continue to figure out how to have a year-round.
Moving on. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda as amended?
I've moved that we accept the consent agenda as amended.
I would second the motion.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Commissioner Murray?
Yes.
Commissioner Babbitt?
Yes.
Commissioner Weathers?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. And our first work session action item is the courthouse planning report and task force request. And we. Need to, uh, we've been asked to authorize staff to apply for design funds through the AOC OJV. Courthouse Task Force. And so we need to talk about. Um, presentation that we had. And also, uh, what I think we need to also touch on going forward. Is this something that we are going to do that we need to keep moving forward on?
Let me request, um, we have two elected officials who are part of the committee also, uh, uh, our district attorney and sheriff. Could we request that they come forward to the?
Yes.
Table so that they can be part of, more active part of the discussion.
As well as, um, Cory was, is here.
She's not elected official, but she was probably there too.
And then Mitch, uh, yes, also from the PLR stage as well.
Me, bigger table.
Well, it's the place we'll. So do you have some questions for them?
Well, I think, isn't Allison going to?
Yeah.
I expect there to be a discussion ensuing after Allison talks.
All right, you're, so. Yes, give us.
Somebody will sit here.
He doesn't like arms. All right. Hope you're all right-handed or you're all lifted.
Well, I, uh, I think we went through a really robust process to really look at um. Putting all of the potential uses together. And so that's where we got to a hundred and twenty-three thousand square foot uh option. Um, as we move through the process, um, it was clear that we needed to look at a phased approach. And so. Uh, what you received tonight was a, an overview of a phased approach that could either work at uh the Wakoma site. Or work at our public work site. Um, as we look at the costs and the current statutory. Uh, limitations around uh the state's participation. Um. If you use the public works site, for example, uh, in my report, uh, I ran, um. We, we worked through some numbers. So, you know, this is looking at twenty thirty-two costs. It's looking at all in costs, assuming that you had the full soft costs. Um, and so about a hundred and fifty-three million dollar prospect as well as the property acquisition, because we would have the road fund involved. And relocation costs if we needed to relocate. Um, the state bond portion of that is thirty-seven million. Um, it would get us out of the courthouse property. The courthouse property was the highest valued uh property um. For um condominium type town home development was the best prospect. So eleven million five hundred for the courthouse.
Can we get the sheet up on the screen so people can follow along? The one called option cost summary.
Have you? Got that?
It's in the packet.
Yeah. It's in the work session action item. So we'll get it up on the report. Um. So that less those improvements and we'll get this up. It would bring us down was that a total needed to bond of a hundred and five million. And so, um. Looking at that cost, um. In a current day with our current um values at a thirty-year amortization, um, you'd be looking at about a dollar eighty per thousand. Um, and so I think there's that piece of it in terms of the current affordability. Um. And I think what, as we talked through it, uh, there were a couple of things. Um. Uh, number two, it's clear that a small county like ours uh needs more state support, which is a case that we've been trying to make. Um, and there have been attempts at legislation that would be a sliding scale of participation. Um, for that, um, which is going to be really critical in terms of our report back to the Association of Oregon County's courthouse task force is. Uh, number one, um, our recommendations would be that, um. We realized we were eligible for fifty percent of the planning costs. So there's additional planning costs that could be reimbursed for um this phase. Um, but then we need legislative assistance in terms of the sliding scale participation. Are there creative ideas? Um, the example was given that for the road fund, there's a small county allotment. So a carve out for small counties. Um, additionally, uh, the OJD funding has um. Uh, statutory requirements around the ability to acquire lands. So if it's land that county is already owned, but we're going to have to relocate. Uses, um, there should be uh, uh, the ability to have grant funds go toward that acquisition. Um, and so I think uh we came to this conclusion that we're at the point of not moving forward. Uh, how, however, uh, we do need to keep the process going. This, the stay in place option. Uh, we're in a building that is not adequate and um subject to failure. Um, and so. Uh, staff believes that it's critical to move forward. I think. Uh, Commissioner Babitz, you made an important observation in regards to. Um, your questions about the timing of markets and where we are in terms of construction costs. Um, and there's times that are good for building and times that are good for bidding projects and times for planning projects. And I think we have enough questions around how we could ultimately achieve this first phase that. Uh, more planning and refining of what we need to do really makes sense for us at this point. Uh, and so the ask there at the end is for, um. A hundred percent participation in the next uh phase of planning, which again will take legislative work on our behalf. Um. And the final part is, is that our existing courthouse, um, and we are thinking that we need, um. To do some tours of our existing courthouse and get our legislators into our uh existing courthouse. Um, because uh we need to reconstruct the, the parking lot. It needs a new roof. The windows, uh, we washed the building when I arrived and we had uh water running down the stairwell. Um, there's some immediate life safety things that we need to address in the courthouse. And so in my report, I had put, um. The request for a Christmas tree bill funding that was actually suggested by our representative from AOC. And I had said a million, however, in uh having the time to chat with Corey, um, our, we had a budget request last year for the roof. For the roof alone was an eight hundred thousand dollar project. And so if we think of the roof and the parking lot and the sidewalks, um. We should be asking for two million dollars in a Christmas tree bill. So I think there's a couple of things for you all to consider. Number one, um. The, the ass of the AOC OJD court, uh, task force. Number two, uh, are we continuing forward on planning? And one thing I just want to say about planning, um, and this period of time that we're in, um. Uh, we had a lot of conversation, um, Commissioner Babitz always has a way of spurring the thought processes. And uh, when you think about the facilities and generational responsibilities for facilities, um, I think there was some good conversation about. What you can do now versus what, um, the next generation should take care of. Um. I would put, I know that the Wakoma site is, is easier to visualize perhaps because you can think about it as a phase and you can think about it as. Um, the overflow to the Wakoma building across the street and utilizing some existing infrastructure. Um. The public work site also offer, offers the opportunity for a future campus. Um, and with the recent discussions that the city has had in regards to their public works, you know. Uh, would there be uh opportunities to cooperate with them? So I really think it makes the case that we, we've got more work to do on the planning side of things. So. Um, I think that is my overview and I would look to you all in terms of what I didn't capture there. And the conversation.
The, if, we've got the numbers up there just to start with it. I, I think, I hope that is. Now, I have to say this because it may not be obvious to people that we all know that a dollar eighty per thousand is insane. That no one's going to put that on the ballot. So I don't want the headline tomorrow to be that. The board of commissioners is looking at, at, you know, that's. Between a ten and twenty percent increase in property taxes for thirty years. So what that demonstrates instead is that the, uh. Courthouse as described is, is not achievable for a county of our size. And that's where we have to start to have the discussion. Uh, what we identified a while back is that. There are three classes in terms of, you know, thirty-six counties, right now every county is supposed to have a courthouse and, and. The, the counties that have replaced courthouses fall into three categories. Either they had a natural disaster that knocked their courthouse down. They have a very large population, so the cost per person is, is low, or they have a data center or, you know, energy, uh, uh, just something. Unusual to pay for it so that it doesn't wind up becoming a part of the, of the personal property tax. Uh, and we don't fall into any of those categories, but there are also many other coun- counties that don't. We just happen to be out of the counties that. Uh, that don't fall in that category. We're kind of the first to absolutely need a courthouse because of, you know, two million dollars just to, just to. Yeah, so the sheriff doesn't have to, and, and so that their DA don't have to have umbrellas uh when they're working in their offices. Uh, so we're kind of unfortunately in the place of being leading edge on this, where you really would, in most cases, you'll, we love to be kind of. Well down the road so that other people can solve the problems before it gets to us, but we don't have that. So, uh, I think that. We have the concept that we have to talk about of, of what. What are we requesting of the state? And the, the three major things have come up is we've talked about, uh, wanting, uh. Needing a discussion of what the state contribution is, that it simply doesn't courthouse. Uh, costs don't scale by population appropriately. So. You have to consider the fact that small communities like ours, just like road fund, the small rural counties. We generate a lot more gas tax dollars and we have a lot more road miles that have to be uh maintained. Similarly, we have a case where the, the dollars per person. For a courthouse are, are extreme. Actually, what I wanted to start with was that. What we learned in the process, it, what Mitch helped us understand is courthouses today are fortresses. It's not a simple building. Uh, uh, the example for Benson County is what seventeen hundred dollars per square foot for a courthouse? Yeah. That, that's, that's, that's the one that's currently under construction, right?
Yeah.
Uh, and, and that is just astonishing. And that, that's sort of the source of the problem that it isn't achievable for a county like ours. So number one, state contribution, we have to figure out how to advocate for increased state contribution. Number two, uh. Uh. I, I, I feel like we have to reconsider the concept that we need a courthouse for every county. And I know there are statutory issues that, statutory requirements, but fundamentally, uh. From a judicial point of view, it may not be possible to have a county with twenty-five thousand people. Uh, and, but we were allowed to create our county and we have a whole bunch of other counties around the state that are. Similarly underpopulated, I think, in terms of the number of people who are paying, paying property taxes. Uh, and so therefore may not be a, um. In long term, it may be that regional, if courthouses have to be fortresses, then maybe they need to be uh regional. Or number three is maybe we need to rethink what a courthouse is, given uh the, the. Current and future world where many things are done virtually, um. Is the physical size of the courthouse necessary? Uh, or maybe, maybe we have to have discussions at the state level about how to. Uh, downsize the need for a courthouse structure so that it's something that can fit in the budget of a county our size. So those are three things I wanted to throw out for people who talk about.
Thank you. That's a great.
Throw out what you do know.
That's a great.
Time in, but I, I thought about the discussion we had later about having regional courthouses. And I think that one of the issues we're also going to fall into is constitutional issues when it comes to defendants. And the ability, because those, they do require in-person. Um, juries, they do require, but then now that a jury appears, so that has to be at, happy by jurisdiction. So. Uh, it's not just having a regional courthouse. It's also been a, also possibly amending constitutional issues. That, uh, that, that do require personal appearance in the courthouse and making sure that's accessible to everybody in the county. With the county seat. So I, I'm just saying that there, there, there's going to be some, like, even if we're considering those, those, there, there's going to be some amendments are going to be a lot higher level than just getting some of the state to get some, to get legislation and statutes. You're, you're talking about amending the constitution.
Not to amend anything simple. I understand that, but it will eventually. Uh, it seems like we're on a trajectory where, uh, if you roll time forward a hundred years. When the other twenty-some odd counties similarly situated to us, will eventually need to replace their structures, um. We won't have courthouse. Physical ability to do that, yeah.
Well, well, that was an advocate because I, I practiced law in Alaska where you had, you had, might have major hubs of courthouses in like Anchorage and Fairbanks. But then like some of the outer uh areas in the, in out in the bush, there's, I had colleagues that tried caves in, in high school gymnasiums.
I mean, it's eighteen minutes to get to the dowels from here, right? Something.
Right. We also, we're talking about criminal defendants too. We're also talking about a lot of people that, that, that don't have driver's licenses that have, like, they don't have entry transportation. We're constantly having people that can't. Unfortunately, the cat bus is actually fairly effective in bringing people to back between, between Hood River and the dowels, but. We get, we do have a lot of people, especially with as many as DUIIs that we get from the Hood River City Police with the.
You don't want to get the license.
They can't, they can't direct a court there. So there, there, there are some logistical problems with, with that. But I, no, I, I see the idea and I see that, that there could be potentially just one fortress in the, in. The regions with other outlined courthouses for, for doing, um, with forums that would. Wouldn't be a full courthouse, but could be used for, uh, for courts of judges or running the circuit.
I guess my point is if it has to be a fortress, uh, it's probably going to have to be regional because every community can afford a fortress, but maybe it doesn't have to be a fortress.
I think also Commissioner, it's important to note, we went through, I, I think I was the only one around them, but ten years ago when we went through this, um, it was. Thirty-eight, forty-three million.
The Karen Joplin's.
Right, absolutely. And we did a very ro- robust process with DLR and, um, you know, very similar, uh, and. Ten years ago, that, that amount of money was unobtainable and, and that's ultimately why it was dropped. Like, how are we going to fund this? Now we're looking ten years later, it's essentially quadrupled. Um, and so. I, I just, it's not, um, it's not tenable. And like you said, and I agree with you a hundred percent, like. We're talking about a building, right? And asking a dollar eighty, one thousand for a building. There's a lot of needs in this community and so, um, we've got to find another way.
The other thing is if you built it ten years ago. For thirty, forty million. Would you have had to then do quite a few, um, continuing renovations in order to have it comply with? The safety and fortress-like requirements now? Because, you know, things have changed. How different would it be? How different are what we're looking at? How different is it from what we were looking at ten years from ago versus ten years from now? Would, if you'd built it then, would it have served our purposes? Would it have had to be beefed up more?
It was, you know, pretty, it was a pretty, I, I think it was similar, very similar, um, to what we're looking at, but. Also some other unique challenges because of sighting at the time and things like that, because we're looking at building on site. And so there is problems with that as well. Um, and so you're not, you know. It, it was just, um. It was still problematic. But it would have met the needs probably today.
I'm also going to say that the price of everything is.
Yeah.
Quadruple. This is just the cost of concrete, rebar of. Uh, of, of things that need to go into a courthouse. Besides the desks and the chairs, which have also increased in price, so.
I, I don't know if there was, um, the need for bulletproof glass and blast proofing. That I know Clackamas County's courthouse says all of that, and I don't recall that being part of the discussion. I, I was just peripherally involved in it. You know, back then, but do you know Mitch?
The, the OJD standards that drive the, what is required to go into a design to get state matching money has not been changed since two thousand nine.
Okay, so we're talking this, so it's basically the same on paper.
Yeah, and, and counties have elected to go above and beyond that for their own purposes. That's in Clackamas's standpoint, that's not being driven by a change in the OJD standards that you need to comply with. So. Um, the, the fortress-like part of it, um. Some of, I think some of that's just innate in separating circulation paths. You can't have defendants walking past public waiting in a courtroom. And that probably won't change no matter what you do unless it's really drastic overthinking of the way that these things work.
Right.
But, um, the fact that these standards have not been readressed since two thousand nine seems like a potential opportunity for maybe updating those to, uh, to current. Um. Realities of, of virtual life now.
That's something that Senator Drazen brought up when we, we talked with Senator Drazen and Representative Alfred Frich, um, um, last week. Last week they, they came by and we had a discussion and, and she made the observation that, uh, that it's probably worth a review of. Uh, of all of that, given, uh, the changes in, in how, uh, you know, trials work and changes in how. Uh, now courthouses function compared to what it was ten, fifteen, twenty years ago.
And, uh, I mean, for what it's worth, it's no news to any of you, but we, we've done similar planning for other small counties and it's the same story. It's ten years ago, it's fifteen years ago. Let's take a look at it again and we see what we did ten, fifteen years ago. It's really painful to see it.
It's ten years ago, it's fifteen years ago, let's take a look at it again and we see what we did ten, fifteen years ago, it's really painful to see it. If only we could have scratched together that ten, fifteen years ago, we couldn't do it back then, we can't do it now, it's still the same story. So that that's a that's a pattern across here, so it's it's not isolated. That does seem like something that. Um, what I'm talking about today would benefit many communities.
I'm pretty sure, I think we made the right choice in that, um, I don't think the sheriff would have his levy if we had. Push the courthouse back first. It was the proper thing to deal was to deal with operations first before dealing with this capital problem. So I I'm not having any second thoughts about uh our predecessors' decisions on that.
No, I'm not either. I'm just thinking that things have changed. Less in the last ten years than they will in the next ten years. Not in the cost, I'm putting the costs aside, what we need. What we think we need compared to what we will need in ten years space. Where we need big courtrooms, where we need. How many things will happen remotely?
That's what Senator Drazen was asking.
Yeah. And I I think that's really.
So so I guess. In terms of moving along, the the question I'm struggling with, and what I'm hoping that we can we can figure out is what can we say to the state? You know, there's this task force, the OJD and and AOC meeting together to work on this problem. Um, do we make just a vanilla request for some plenty of dollars to move this forward? Or do we attempt to change the net, change the discussion? Or do we do both? Or neither? Or something else?
I think Alison, uh, Alison, I think, talked to many of us at the stable about like what she should put in there. And I think the proposal is do both because it. If if we don't do both, we're not gonna get there. We have to, we have to fix the current conditions because. Granted, they aren't using umbrellas, but they're using buckets. Um, you know, those things aren't happening right now. We've we've closed the sidewalk. I don't want to close the driveway uh that we're the police park right now, or the sheriff parks, excuse me. Um, those are, those are where we're at. We're closing things because it's not functional. And people are not warm, not cold. Um, they're getting rained on. Water's coming through the windows, it's just not a situation. So we need to fix the current situation to at least get it fortified so that. Weather stays outside, not inside. And then the second thing is like we have to keep moving, but what does that moving forward mean? That's the question that they have. And then the the third one is, we have to. Work with AOC on what it is gonna look like moving forward of. Is it gonna be a sliding scale? Is it gonna? Is the match gonna be different? Uh, what is that? That conversation that we get to have with AOC to move that forward? So I see it as a three-legged ask to AOC.
To plead devil's advocate on that, though, uh. I guess the concern that I raise on that is that at some level, we're throwing good money after bad. Every dollar we invest in patching something that we're gonna tear down is wasted. Every dollar we put into planning for something that we don't actually ever build is wasted. I don't know. You know, not knowing what the future is, I don't know which is the path where we're wasting money.
So is one option that you see um simply. Putting everything on pause. I mean, we've got various options. Is one of them that we pause? The planning and we go to the AOC and start working on changing the vision of. What we're gonna build?
Well, I think what Alison was proposing is we can make the requests for funds from AOC for the next level of planning. But at the same time, not actually spend those dollars unless we make some progress. On making it more believable that we have a path forward. If 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 we get one more level in planning and we still have, and now we have to get a dollar eighty bond passed. Then. You know, we've we've thrown away the dollars, you know, because the planning, they're not paying the full cost of the plan, they're paying half the cost. And so half of that's gonna come from us, so it's real money. Um, I hate to see it. I mean, this budget's not gonna be an easy budget, but I hate to see us spending real money. On planning for something that we all know is just never going to happen, so. How do we?
And I think I don't think that was the proposal. The proposal was. Either we get it all, the all of the planning money, or we don't move forward with the plan.
Or is it that they pay a hundred percent of the planning money?
So that is the.
Yeah. I I just, I I. I feel guilty making a request if we're requesting them to pay for something that we know isn't going to be. Isn't going to be done, isn't going to be achievable.
Well, I I think that um. We know that the stay-in-place option is not working for us, and so I think it's an opportunity to plan. While we are working on legislative changes, uh, knowing that the end goal is to have them pay for a larger share. And for us to really be honing the numbers and looking at a phasing plan perhaps. Um, so there is some uh ability to look at. Can the, and and this really is gonna require some analysis on the part of county staff going through the process. But is there some staging through the sale of properties and leasing? So sale, move staff, lease. In order to, and this needs to be much better laid out, but it's just the concept of. Um, we, it would give us the time to think through a process that might be more achievable. Given the constraints uh while we're trying to get more support.
So what you described is, if we can. Get rid of the the defective courthouse, the courthouse is going to become a money pit, get rid of that, sell that property. And and move functions into proper, into space that we rent. As we figure out what the next.
That could be an option. That could be an option, but I think we really need to work through it. Um, and understand, again, the sunk cost of leasing. Um, or there may be other options. I mean, if the public works side is an option, there are things that could be done. Um, with temporary facilities there too, but it really needs to be thought through. And we want the dollars to do it, and this is where the dollars could come from for the for the plan and. And part of this planning would be a decision about whether or not we're going to spend more money. Uh, fixing the courthouse and fixing the roof or trying to lease, that could be. How, but how long can we put off those things? I I think we need to have an understanding of uh where we are after this legislative session. Um, because if we look for a short-term ask in this legislative session. Um, and then we have our upcoming budget process, and so having an understanding that if we can't come up with. Uh, dollars to fix the courthouse on just Band-Aids. Uh, and uh. Otherwise, we would have to budget for some fixes to the courthouse in the next uh year's budget. So I think this spring is really a telling time period for that.
The if if we step back a couple steps to. Why is the facility insufficient? It comes back to insufficient for the court. It's. Safety, security, and operations of the court. And so I I think maximizing two pieces of this, one is maximize the ask, the funding ask you can get. But I also think taking a hard look at what is the first step you can do, what's the bite, the smallest bite you could take first, and that's. The courthouse, and if that means. Other departments can potentially still exist within the existing courthouse and we can fix that up. The problem with the courthouse is the court functioning in the courthouse. We can solve the physical problems in that courthouse. You know, there's a, there's a possibility that you could have a project that's small enough that you could bite off and chew, which is maximizing the amount of money you could get for. Uh, the project from the state match money, just courthouse, whatever the state is requiring of that first step. Courthouse, public defense, district attorney.
But in that model, you don't get to sell that property.
Yeah, it would be, it would be keeping them, but.
But if we can't afford to seismically retrofit that building. Is that something we want to do?
I think that'd be part of the, part of the cost equation.
Wasn't it identified back in two thousand nine that the building is a total loss from any? In terms of any recon, it can't be reconstructed so that it's usable.
It can't be retrofitted affordably for seismic.
So he's the expert, that's what I'm asking. That was a question, sorry.
I'm not familiar with that seismic report. Typically, there's different levels that you can seismically retrofit something to. Whereas you need to immediately reuse it afterwards, that's a much higher level. You can seismically retrofit something for uh. Life safety, that gets people out of the building. And we've looked at buildings that are as of the same vintage as this one. That has the ability to seismically retrofit in both ways. Um, I don't know what would be financially feasible or not. I'm not familiar with that study, but um, I. The idea of it's not financially feasible to retrofit the courthouse. That's a much smaller number than what we're talking about for the other project, phase one being all the building. So I think if we're looking at a holistic solution, it might be seismically retrofit. Put a new roof on, change the mechanical system and build just what you get for a state match money. I mean, that might be part of a, part of the the equation.
But either way, the ask right now. Correct me if I'm wrong, is to bring it to the twenty twenty seven legislative session. Which won't be able to start money into twenty twenty nine. So if we don't do this now, we wait two years, it's twenty twenty nine, the earliest is twenty thirty nine.
Are there more discussion or do you?
We need more.
How do you feel about this potential others?
I feel like we should ask citizens for a dollar eighty a thousand, and that would be our unelected um strategy.
North and easy out?
Yeah, that would be an easy out.
Actually, I'm curious, what what do you think? What it, what could you go to your neighbors and say? What would you think would be, uh, uh, I should ask this about your question, but what?
That's an interesting question.
Is there any number that you think is rational or reasonable to ask your neighbors for a courthouse? Or is it simply an unfundable thing? And maybe think on this and get back to me later.
Well, whatever.
I think it's unfundable. I mean, just off the top of my head, that's gonna be a tough ask. I mean, you know, I think, I think public safety, um. You know, that's something tangible you see ours, you know, you see sheriff's department out patrolling and doing things. Of building, um, we all know is necessary to. For the functions of our county, but. Hard hard for people to wrap their head around that one, I think. Or maybe it's just hard for me to wrap my head around.
We couldn't do a, you know, an ad campaign with these cities, smiling mats, uh.
We could try that, huh?
We do have uh Ryan Beach online. I don't know if he has anything he wants to add to the conversation. Um, the, you know, one of the criteria for going through the program is that you have the court as a partner, and I just want to say. Uh, to Ryan Beach and Judge Austria, they've been amazing, uh, and uh, Ryan has been such a huge advocate in. Trying to define exactly what OJD will pay for, so that's been great. Okay, all right. So he's been listening in. Yeah, okay. And I think, um, you know, in the evaluating of the dollar eighty, that's why we did put in the list from the KED. Um.
Yes.
Just so that we are building the understanding of everything this small county is trying to do. And um, I think I sat in a school district facilities committee meeting and in my head I was adding up. Their stay-in-place option at two hundred million, our facilities needs, if you, you know, did the whole shebang at two hundred million. You and you start going down the list, and soon you're getting to, you know, two billion dollars in needs for a county of. Twenty four thousand people, so um, yeah, understanding what is priority is. Is a piece of the work ahead also.
I think it, again, it just shows you it's the size of the county, right, and and how few taxpayers we have. You see over the last number of years in the in the metro area of these gigantic high schools, you know, the one in in Beaverton, the one. Um, in Twolton or in Tiger, um, they're just gigantic.
And those also have to be something of a fortress today.
Yeah.
Also, Kenny just went through all of this too. I had the pleasure of working with them when I was DA over there and.
Yep.
The solution they had, they just bought into the building and moved everybody out of the courthouse except for court staff, the DA's office, the sheriff, and probation members. They just gave everybody more space in the old courthouse, which was. Security was was not adequate for the DA's office there, it was that there there wasn't even magnetic doors. It was because it was an old courthouse and it has historic doors. The only thing they could do for security in the DA's office was lock the door and say please knock.
It's before they invented magnets.
Oh, so Ryan is on as a panelist now, if he wants to add a few comments.
Uh, sorry, I'm at I'm at basketball practice, so I'm trying to get somewhere where it's not noisy, but. Yeah, I mean, I don't have much to add. I don't disagree with anything you guys have said. I will say I. I don't think the needs have significantly changed in the last years, if anything, they've got more restrictive. Um, so. And with remote hearings, you know, it still doesn't take away the need like like Matt said, um, Matt Ellis said. To satisfy those constitutional requirements and we still. While it's a percentage of our court hearings, it's still not the majority of our court hearings. And other than that, it's a tough, I know it's a tough thing you guys have before you and um Alison and. And Corey and the whole team have been incredible to work with, so um, I I do feel like um. I just told Alison this too, I thi- I think we have a great leadership team working on this and um. I'm I'm just happy to support whatever I can um from the court side to to help wherever, wherever we can, whatever changes we need to make at the state level.
Thank you. The disembodied voice. Okay, he's gonna help us from court side. He said it, not me. Well. We do have to make a decision, um. Mission ready, your input? Yeah, and I think we have to make an ask. Now's the time, we can't wait any longer. And if we can ask for a hundred percent of the planning costs from AOC and they're willing to do that, then that gives us more. Resources for more potential plans and. Options, the face approach is the only thing I can see.
Yeah, that's what kind of caught me. I I was uh thinking about the concept of. Uh, which Alison had suggested of of moving functions out of the courthouse into rental space. Do tenant improvements um and sell that property and use that to acquire a path forward. But we don't have numbers to say if that works, but figuring out if something like that is doable would be really valuable.
And that is. Something that we could do with the design funds. We could spend them on planning for that instead. It's not, it doesn't have to be a new building. Okay. Well, it sounds as though what I'm hearing is that um, in general, people support applying for the funds. So that we can move forward and also move forward. To the political process. Do you guys have any more? Does any of the four of you have further input? Thank you for what you've offered us so far.
I just think it's really.
They're just glad they don't have to make the decision.
Yeah, but I also think it's important that we got this out so that the public understands, or anyone who's. Who's paying attention would understand that the nature of this decision, the nature of the discussion, and that we're not just blindly. uh moving to build a building that we can afford.
Right.
And are there any other partners in the area? Mentioned the city also needs a building. I know that that wasn't included. I'm just wondering, like, is we're just such a small county that we have to work with our other partners if they're looking for more space? If there's any room for more collaboration and whether they can pull in any funds, I don't know.
I I feel like every entity is going through facilities planning and so the timing uh to kind of uh put this out there and uh is good. Uh, cause obviously the school district is going through their facilities planning, the port, the city, the pool, all of us.
I think it's, I think it's important to note too, I mean, we're talking about one kind of facility. We're talking about the courthouse. It doesn't address the shortfalls of this building. I have significant concerns as sheriff because of the critical infrastructure this county has here. And it it doesn't address public works, which there are significant needs there. And um so the needs just can continue. Uh, they're all, they're all necessary.
Yeah, that's where I brought the generational equity concept, if I said, I really, yep. If if we solve the courthouse problem, we've done our job, right? Unless Cory lets us like cut these pillars out of this building to improve, so I just missed me stop, but I I'm not the.
We might be able to build sooner.
If you plan on doing, if you plan on doing that, make sure we're not here, you know?
Yes, I would probably not be here anymore.
Well, then it sounds as though we do want to apply for the funding. So is there a motion or more discussion to authorize staff to apply for design funds through the A O C O G D courthouse task force and use them as we've discussed?
Do we need a motion?
No, you're right. This is work stuff, work session. So you just need to informally move forward. Okay?
And I appreciate everyone's uh patience on this, yeah, assistance.
And thank you for sticking around and weighing in. We really appreciate it.
Do we need direction on the ask, the other asks for the O J B conversations, the sliding scale? I think that's paying back of the the current property.
I think what I understood is that included all of the items that are on the recommendation in my staff report. So it was the reimbursement of the initial planning, the all the legislative work, the full request for funds. And then to try to get some state funds right now to help with courthouse emergent they need. Is that correct?
Yes.
I guess I'm not sure if I'm clear on the bigger discussions of of things like changing the model of courthouse per county. Do you feel chartered to to raise that with O J D A O C or not?
I felt like that was part of the consensus this evening.
I think we, that's all, we all, yes.
No, that that's, I'm I'm, I was asking for that, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you all. What's left is?
The next item would be uh uh simple one uh at the last meeting where we appointed the new member of the local public safety coordinating council. Commissioner Moretti asked about um the makeup of the board and the constitution of voting members. Um, so in your packet are the bylaws. The sheriff is here. Um, uh Chief Deputy Rocket has been running uh the lipstick enough the way it's been operating. It is a board function. Um, and it is seven members. Seven of the listed members constitute a forum. So uh Commissioner M- Moretti, when you were asked for a vote, that is. Yeah, they were trying to get a forum for a vote to move um move things forward, but um so were there any other questions or concerns?
Yeah, and I think one of the very first meetings I went to D A Carrie Rasmussen was there and I was sitting next to her and there was a vote. And I was like, oh, yeah, I would vote. I think it was funds for one of the a community partner. And she's like, oh, no, you don't get to vote. And so I was like, oh, okay. So I just I was like, oh, I'm I'm here just to observe. And so that's why I was under the impression that I was not a voting member. So I didn't vote. And that's why I was like, okay, good to read what's going on. But yeah, looking at the bylaws, there's the county commissioner.
And who runs it? Any additional uh sheriff that you would like from the commission to help with that?
I just wanted to kind of inform them of a conversation I recently, but I don't want to monopolize too much time. But um last week, the um executive director of the Criminal Justice Commission, Ryan Keck. And I haven't reached out to me. So the last legislative session, there was House Bill three zero six nine passed. And so basically what that does is it takes all of the funding that goes to the Criminal Justice Commission. So we we have four grants in Hickover County from the C J C. That's um justice reinvestment, deflection uh impacts, which we talked about earlier, and then um the treatment courts. And so they legislature wants to basically pile those all into one grouping uh that the C J C uh would do things a little bit differently internally, but what it does is it actually necessitates a more active lipstick. And so he wanted to meet to talk about our lipsticks here in Wausco County, and particularly wanted to talk to myself and Sheriff McGill. Um, uh because we have this shared deflection program. But what they're looking at is doing a full public safety plan that is actually created by the lipstick. And so it really necessitates this need to have a more active lipstick and have all of our partners um participating in that, which has been a challenge here. It's really, we run a lot of plans through there. Uh, but it's a challenge to get it formed. It's a challenge to get people to show up. But I think with these legislative changes, I think it really kind of underscores the need for uh for more activity. Um, I I really appreciate the fact that um, the the new member, public member, first time we've had a public member. I know Tim were really well that you were appointed. Um, I think he will be bring a breadth of experience to that committee. And hopefully um we can actually lean on him to help kind of reinvigorate that. He's still a lot of experiences and um other jurisdictions. So just wanted to add that in that we're gonna see the need for that.
And as I understand it, we need to um recommend to reconvene and restructure the lipstick as a board because it's our
Board of Commissioners.
Board of Commissioners responsibility to do that. So we need a motion to do that.
I I think not at, not at this time. I think it was bringing information forward for you. And then uh it will be a future item.
Okay, yes. All right. Will, do we need a motion? We do need a motion on the part property.
Yes, yes, yes. So um
And we also need a motion on the Gilhuli, on the um customary closures, correct?
Right. And so uh Doug C C is here. So the next two items are forestry items. So um we were successful in um getting an accepted offer on the Hartlove property. So um we would need a motion from the board to accept the purchase and sale agreement and authorize the chair to re-sign closing document. On that one. And then um so that's one item, if you want to do.
Yeah, let's do that. Um, are there, is there discussion or comments? I think we know.
And we should note that it was at two thirty five. So that was a a good purchase price in that property.
Uh, I would move that we accept the purchase and sale agreement and authorize the chair to sign the closing documents.
Second devotion.
Moved and seconded. Is there any more discussion? Commissioner Weathers?
Yes.
Commissioner Moretti?
Yes.
Yes.
Chair votes, yes. And so now we're on to the road closures.
And this item would typically be on your consent agenda because every year we um we uh closed gates for uh and numerous reasons, but because you've had a couple of inquiries. Uh, we put this on the new business uh agenda and Doug has um some information to provide in regards to the um the consideration that the forestry department gives to seasonal closures and the use of gate.
Yeah, so uh Arthur, thanks for forwarding the emails that went through and around. Uh, you know, we get, you do get comments like that from time to time. But this one was a little bit unique and and so it kind of launched us into just kind of exploring this a little bit more. And I kind of wanted to kind of uh lay this out for you as well, because we consider some of this. So the tree farm has a variety of roads. Uh, we serve many purpose purposes from recreation to timber harvest and hauling the timber and 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 then even fire control access, something that what I like to point out quite a bit. It's pretty important to be able to access uh areas of the forest when you need to put out a fire. And the roads are very important for that. Uh, our twenty thou- our twenty fifteen forest management plan, pages twenty seven to twenty eight discusses uh road and access management um and some recommendations. It's it's fairly brief, but it gives an overview of kind of how we go about it and how we've been doing it um for actually a long time. A little more background and contextual overview, around three hundred mile of the forest road on the county tree or on the county tree farm and basic road construction without rock costs about twenty eight thousand dollars per mile. Um, that's for forest road construction. And then most construction and maintenance is incorporated with timber sales when possible. But there's some that has to happen outside of that because timber sales don't cover enough of the land uh consistently. Roads are one of our greatest assets on the county forests. Um, and they are also the largest expense annually, if you consider what we put into it during a timber sale. Um, that includes things like rock, rock pit development and rock crushing and that we have to have for road surfacing at times. So there are a lot of costs that goes into it. Uh, on the other hand, public activities and some forest management activities initiate many of the maintenance needs. Uh, many roads do not have enough rock to support heavy use during all weather conditions. Uh, forest practice rules require continued maintenance and improvement to maintain surface integrity for protection of surface water resources. This is a regulated, this is regulated for compliance by O D F. Uh, and these and other associated resource values may require seasonal seasonal closures. Uh, we've got three kinds of roads. I'll just briefly touch on these. Primary roads typically improved are mostly open to the public all year with limited seasonal closures. However, rock surfacing depth is often limited, so seasonal closures are necessary at times. And examples are portions of Post Canyon, Rorden Hill, uh gated closure, as well as the Gilhuli gated closures, which was first initiated by the county ordinance in the late seventies. And that's on the on the docket today as well. Um secondary roads are used for management access and they are often gated and typically closed to year round traffic. And then lastly, we have spur roads, which are the most common road type with nearly a hundred and seventy miles of forest roads. Uh, they provide essential access on intermittent basis, typically have seasonal use and are less likely to be rocked unless they are close to a good rock source. Um, these roads benefit from minimizing travel during wet conditions, which also leads to soil and water quality benefits. To this point, uh, these roads may be gated, blocked, or allowed to grow in with brush between management activities. Uh, again, they're they're more for specific intermittent basis access uh at at specific times. Uh, so benefits of reducing travel or on roads uh or restricting that access to to uh protect them. It decreases general road wear and tear and dampening. And there's economic loss or cost if you don't do it. Uh, it reduces soil loss by uh reducing that traffic and access. It reduces negative water quality impacts. Again, this is regulated and monitored by the state. Uh, it can mitigate impacts to wildlife and positively affect wildlife movement and impacts on neighboring properties. It can reduce risk, the risk of fire or risk of people causing fires if you reduce some of that access. Um, and it reduces dumping and long term camping in some cases as well, which can be difficult to administer and and manage. The current management plan recommendation minimizes severe impacts by limiting public access during wet weather periods. In some cases, in other cases, wet weather also is also noted as a concern in forest administrative policy. So it's not a new concept to close roads or or restrict access during certain times. It's been in the administrative policy for a very long time, for uh well over a couple decades. And then uh again, I just want to reflect, we do have that ordinance from the late seventies that we normally close seasonally. Gilhuli, Post Canyon Road and a portion of Rorden Hill Road as well. It's just something that we've been doing for a while. Then other references that we seek and and connect with on this is O D F and W. Uh, we have local coordination for road and trail management because of its nexus with wildlife impacts. And this is very common, a very common consideration across the forest industry nationally. It's not just either both private and public lands. Uh, I'd like to segue to just access. Uh, the hunting, the the email that we got here a while back and and related to access for hunting. Um, and specifically kind of special access opportunities for someone that might be disabled. Uh, we did receive that email about no longer having vehicle access to a spur road on Middle Mountain this past hunting season. And the person was disabled and and was uh able to access the the location in the past. Um, and so they're interested about, and they're disappointed, I would say for sure, disappointed that this access had been closed. So what caused that? Well, this summer, the county conducted some road improvements with the roll roll splice timber sale uh on Middle Mountain and three, two or three gates were added along with the roadwork. And I don't know, uh, Sophie can pull that map up or that, I could easily kind of point this out. There's a few roads, uh, what what I would call a secondary road, as well as some spur roads that come off of uh the main Gilhuli Road on Middle Mountain. And uh those secondary and spur roads provide access to some cut over areas that have been cut over and passed. I'm gonna stand up and just kind of point some stuff up here. You've got uh, you've got Gilhuli Road coming up here in in red. Um, several new harvest use that will be uh harvested next year. And uh we've got some spur roads and secondary roads that come in. And we placed new gates here, here, and here on this portion. Um, but some of these roads are dirt surface, they're native surface roads. Um, and again, to our plan, a lot of times we do, we do a timber sale. We don't run out and do all the gates that we could possibly do at once. We usually link it up to when we're doing road projects, some improvement, some extending, some roads, some rocking. But overall, we do sometimes incorporate the the gates as a tool to limit future wear and tear on our roads. I would say is one of the primary purposes. And also in consideration, not all these roads are rock either. So um some of the roads go out and and uh again, because of the wear, without a gate, you're gonna get a lot of wear and tear on those roads. Um, and so that is definitely part of the consideration. But that also created this situation where this individual couldn't get there anymore. Um, and so it kind of messed up the plans probably when they got out there. Um now I can empathize with this because I've been out in recent years, a few years ago, hunting with my dad who was disabled and on better accounting ground and you know, you're pretty limited in terms of what you what you can try to access and do. And so I I do get that. Um, now, I don't know that we should get into managing the hunting per se. Um, I really think that's more of O D F and W's job and I, but I think there's some other options out there. And I suggest that we connect with O D F and W, which I haven't done. options out there. And I suggest that we connect with O D F and W, which I haven't done yet on this. Really to see kind of what they do have for uh, access programs for hunters that might have disability. Not as familiar with it in Oregon. I know in Washington, there are some examples where certain landlords work with the Fish and Wildlife Department there to provide access for people who are disabled. Um, it's not all roads. In fact, it's fairly selected areas, but um, I do know there's examples out there where it's done. Um, so with that, um, I'm kind of open to what, what you think. Um, and how much effort we should put into this.
Well, have you looked, so you haven't investigated yet with O D F and W?
Not yet.
This sounds like a great idea to be working with them on this. And if we can create an option for uh, uh, hunters with disabilities, you know, open it for, you know, open a gate for a couple of a couple of days or selected days or, or selected days depending on weather to something where we can minimize road damage. And this doesn't, these don't seem like uses that cause a lot of road damage, but minimize road damage without just wholesale leaving the gates open.
Right. I, I think trying to get their help. Again, I don't know what their appetite is or their bandwidth is to support it either. I, I'd, I'd say we should start there and explore what that could look like. One thing I will say is, I mean, there's, there's going to be a fair number of people that are going to fit in this category.
Yep.
Um, so it's not just one or two or even ten people. I think there'd be a fair number of people. Um, but I want to get a feel for how O D F and W manage this demand in the state and, and then what could we do locally? Um, I'm open to, at least thinking about it for sure. Um, and so I I'd like to continue on that path. It might take me a little bit, but so by next season, you know, next fall, maybe we have some other options in place that could be done.
You, you identified that it's a fair number of people. I think, you know, says that there's a greater reason to do it because there's a need that's not being met. Uh, and this is so particularly sympathetic situation where, you know, one would want to provide these folks who, yeah, uh, who have, uh, some disability with you know, they should, they should be able to, to, to hunt. There's nothing there's not, I, I can't see a good argument to, to ignore this request.
There, there may be something reasonable that we can provide or help or assist with. Um, and so I need to explore that a little bit. I don't want to make it cumbersome for us.
Yep.
I don't want to just open all the gates. Um, that'd be excessive. But I think there could be some opportunity there. I'm open to exploring that a little bit more.
Well, I know your plate's really full, but um, yeah, I think do we, Commissioner Moretti, are you wanting to move forward?
Yeah, definitely something I want to move forward with.
Yeah, I, I, I would agree. Um, I mean, I completely understand the protection of the roads and have to make some difficult decisions, but I think, I think looking for alternatives to provide access for people is, is pretty important as opposed to just saying the roads are closed because of this. Yeah.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Well, and maybe there's a way to kick you back on the handicap uh, permit in the car. So that's who, you know, that's how you could define who qualifies for that particular special access.
Or you placard with the, the same placard but with the gun attached to it.
But I mean, I'm looking to see what O D F and W does. Cause I think they have kind of special categories, I recall. My dad had that on his license. So there would be a way and they probably have a pretty good idea just how many of those they issue
Right.
as well. And so anyway, a little more information I need to have before I can really develop uh, some solutions here, but.
And I bet you're already thinking about where this might be able to happen.
Again, I want to, I don't want to get too far. I think there's places that we could, we can do it, you know, there's some, so I think there's places.
Well, we look forward to hearing back when you, when you have time to do that.
Yeah. And you know, the other night, we had some conversations there. There's some input on gates, kind of both for Oregon. There, there's other reasons why you might do them or you might not have gates, but again, as a management tool and, and really being cost effective and having road systems that don't get too much wear and tear. Um, I think it's still a tool we need to use. In some cases, we might use it more than we have. And a lot of that is just because we do get a lot of use on the forest. There's some areas that are heavily impacted. Even some of the most heavily impacted areas, we're getting more and more interest in even having some of those areas more gated on some of the main roads even. And so that's something we're going to explore. I don't know if it'll be immediately, but we're thinking hard about it. And, you know, over, over the coming couple of years even, and as we get into the management planning process, I'll probably pull some of that up and identify those, those areas.
Just to remind everybody, I'm, I'm not sure if we were all there, but O D F W guy was saying that that he thought from a habitat point of view, there was value to uh, have a, the, the gates. The seasonal closures were important for animal, uh, for, for wildlife in that it gave them a piece of the year that they could be there without having to be as alert.
They also have a desire to even go one step further into a seasonal trail closure.
Oh, okay.
To help wildlife, yes.
To recreational trail closure, yeah.
Which could help the trail sustainability, but it obviously have other impacts.
Right, right.
And we'll, we'll have to look through that a little bit too, just in terms of, um, and how you regulate that. How does our policy really allow for that? You know, one of the things in statute in two seven five, it uh, generally allows the public access to, to your tree farm properties. I mean, that's that's in there. Um, but again, how you restrict that access, how you have to do that, well, does that include people just on foot? For example, you know, so we have to kind of wrestle through that a little bit and see how feasible some of that is, but we're, with the amount of use that we have, we have to think about these things.
Sure.
I'm not advocating for that, to be clear.
Oh, the trail closure?
Yeah. So it's, um.
Well, I mean, you, you haven't given any specifics, so, yeah. So, you haven't given specifics. I think would, to, to me, it would depend on the specifics.
Yes, yeah, lots to unpack.
Yep, exactly. That's what I'm trying to say. Thank you.
Uh, with that, I think.
I will say just in regards to like, we do have a tool in place with the, the tree farm digital trail map to communicate to the public. Um, the status of gates being open or closed. So I do have something we can build off there.
Yeah, I love watching. There's, there's a Facebook group for uh, um, for our, our local forest recreational users. And people are always saying, hey, is this trail open? And the, oh, five people over respond like, just look at the map.
Been a very handy tool that, uh, Jake and TJ and you was kind of, I mean, Jake was really the, the catalyst behind it, but uh, you know, kind of during, uh, trying times last summer, kind of during the fire closure, kind of when he was able to get that thing up and running and it was very timely.
Yep. People don't realize that it is that the map itself is always up to date. It is precise, is a precise reflection of whether trails are open or closed. They're used to the old tools like uh, trail forks and things like that, where it would be three months before the status got changed on something to reflect reality. So I, I think it's, I think that's why it's going to take a little while for people to get used to. They know you can really trust this. If it says it's open, it's open. If it says it's closed, it's closed.
It's not the only way we do it. Uh, usually if we're trying to close it, there's something on the ground too, but um, this is a way before you even go, you should be able to figure it out.
I found a, a three-year-old closure sign once when I was riding in a, in an unusual, in a corner of the forest. So, yeah.
Were, were you here at the beginning of our meeting?
Uh, not the very start.
So you didn't hear what Dale Hill told us?
I was here for that.
You were here for that. So, um, can you give us any, um, information about? And you, I, I think I know where it was. Is that our ga, is that the county's gate or is it the landowner's gate?
I'm, I'm familiar with both locations that he was talking about. We had a good conversation this afternoon. It was late enough that I didn't have time to really follow up on it. Um, but yeah, anyways, but later this week I will. I'm familiar with both locations. Um, and, you know, it's, I just, I don't have too much more to add yet because I need to follow up with one of the landowners. And then, uh, you know, just kind of scope out exactly what's going on at the other locations. So, um, but they're both pretty well pinpointed based on his description. Uh, it's been a little while, probably at least a year or more since I've been to either of those spots, but I've been there before.
So is that a county gate or is it the landowner's gate?
Um, I think in both case, well, one for sure. Well, there's really, so the one road that goes up from the rock pit of two eighty-one, there's, there's a county gate at the bottom.
Hmm.
And then that road goes through all the way to the top, uh, of, of Middle Mountain there. And there's a gate up there too. So it's gated on both ends. There's also a gate where the road forks and goes over to the private, uh, landowner's property as well, across the east fork of the river. And there's a bridge there. And uh, so I just need to check on that. Apparently the gate was open. Dale showed me a picture of the open gate and tracks.
So there's another place to access the county roads and property from the private owner and they have a gate that's normally closed, but it was the one that he was talking about being open. So ours were still closed at the bottom and the top. And these are those situations where there's actually another way to get in between them.
Yeah, in, on the road. And you know, I would say generally, maybe not looking specifically at this location on Middle Mountain, but on Middle Mountain, it is a common practice for landowners to access the county forest from, directly from their property. It's a challenge that we have as we get into more diligent management and effective trail management, actually official, more official trails on Middle Mountain, which is probably around the corner. I would say in the next year or two, you're going to start to see us embark in that direction. Uh, we've been putting some work on that, um, this, this summer and fall already, uh, more specifically for certain motorized trails there. But as we start to do that, we're going to have to address some of, kind of the historic use there as well. And that's you know, that will be challenging because some people like it, be able to get out in the forest from their house. Um, now, when you start to have public trails, the other side of that is now people can go the other way to their house. And um, I'm, I'm imagining that will go as well, but um, that's something we're going to have to navigate. There's going to have to be some education.
Thank you.
Um, I would like to make a motion that we approve the customary seasonal closure of Gilhuli, Post Canyon and Riordan Hill Roads identified uh, in our packet, uh, for wet winter season utilizing existing gate locations.
Second devotion. Very specific.
I'm reading what is.
Is there any discussion? Commissioner Weathers.
Yes.
Commissioner Abbott.
Yes.
Commissioner Moretti.
Yes.
Chair votes, yes. Motion passes. We are adjourned.
Thank you for allowing this to be discussed.